Recommendation with all, did you write everything down, Mr.? Okay.
Yeah, no, yeah, no earlier than eight AM, no later than seven.
No later than seven.
No mechanical repairs on site.
No mechanical repair.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. So you want?
Motion, second.
Motion to adjourn, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You have adjourned.
I'm going to read the roll for the seven o'clock meeting. Counselor Capone.
Yeah.
Counselor DeFlorio. Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Matusky.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Napolitano.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
President Delasola.
Here.
We have nine members present. We do have a quorum.
Will you already salute the flag?
Yeah, we must suspend the, uh, we can do it again.
We'll salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we stay risen for one moment?
Just have a moment of silence. Al Latanzi, longtime Everett resident, businessman, and Dolores Latanzi works out of the mayor's office. Al lost his sister Joyce. Just have a moment of silence, please.
Thank you.
Okay, clerk, can you read number one on the agenda, please?
Yes. These are public hearings, items one and two. Item number one is a public hearing offered by Counsel Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby offers the opportunity, offers the opportunity to, for the public to speak on the proposed budget for the fiscal, the city fiscal year 2020 budget, section six dash four of the city charter.
Motion for public hearing.
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Is it anybody, I'll ask three times, anybody in favor? Anybody want to speak on the 2020 budget? Okay, just state your name when you come up, please, and your address. Just make sure that's on, please.
Thank you for having me. Thank you, President Delasola and the council. My name is Samantha Lambert. I'm a resident of Tony Pierce Ave. in Everett, and I wanted to speak in favor of the budget, specifically the school piece, and ask that you pass that in full, as was referred by the school committee. And just as a parent and a special education parent, some of the challenges that we've struggled with this past year, as far as large class sizes, shared guidance counselors, and, you know, understanding that they're a lot behind that, and I don't want to go there, but I also don't want us to repeat the mistakes, because one year in a seven-year-old and a nine-year-old and a 10-year-old's early education makes such an impact, and we can lose students in, in just a year. So although I know that our state government is working hard to make sure that we have the correct funding, and I pray that passes, it won't impact the 2019 to 2020 school year. So as a parent, I just ask that you consider passing that in full.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak on this piece? I'll ask three times. Anybody in favor of this piece? Anybody in favor of this piece? Third time, anybody in favor? That portion's closed. Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Third time, anybody opposed? That part is closed. All in favor? Ayes have it. Read number two on the agenda, please.
Item number two is a public hearing offered by Counsel Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby offers the opportunity, offers the opportunity to, for the public to speak on the proposed budget for the fiscal, the city fiscal year 2020 budget, section six dash four of the city charter.
Motion for public hearing.
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Is it anybody, I'll ask three times, anybody in favor? Anybody want to speak on the 2020 budget? Okay, just state your name when you come up, please, and your address. Just make sure that's on, please.
Thank you for having me. Thank you, President Delasola and the council. My name is Samantha Lambert. I'm a resident of Tony Pierce Ave. in Everett, and I wanted to speak in favor of the budget, specifically the school piece, and ask that you pass that in full, as was referred by the school committee. And just as a parent and a special education parent, some of the challenges that we've struggled with this past year, as far as large class sizes, shared guidance counselors, and, you know, understanding that they're a lot behind that, and I don't want to go there, but I also don't want us to repeat the mistakes, because one year in a seven-year-old and a nine-year-old and a 10-year-old's early education makes such an impact, and we can lose students in, in just a year. So although I know that our state government is working hard to make sure that we have the correct funding, and I pray that passes, it won't impact the 2019 to 2020 school year. So as a parent, I just ask that you consider passing that in full.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to speak on this piece? I'll ask three times. Anybody in favor of this piece? Anybody in favor of this piece? Third time, anybody in favor? That portion's closed. Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Third time, anybody opposed? That part is closed. All in favor? Ayes have it. Read number two on the agenda, please.
Item number two is a public hearing offered by Counsel Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council allow the public an opportunity to speak on the proposed capital improvement plan budget for fiscal year 2020, in accordance with section six dash five of the city charter.
Move to public hearing.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Anybody else there want to speak on number two on the agenda, for the capital improver plan? No speakers? Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor? Anybody in favor of the improvement capital plan? That part is closed. Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Third time, anybody opposed? No speakers? That portion's closed. All in favor? Ayes have it. Ayes have it.
There was no one signed in for vote participation. If you want to ask once and then...
Anybody in the public want to speak on any item? The motion's closed.
Make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from our last council meeting.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. We, yes, that's, we have a few pieces on the sign-in sheet if you indulge me. The first pieces are items nineteen and twenty-four. I would, you can, you'd have to vote on them separately. It's your choice if you want to, but I would say separately.
So make a motion, yeah, and vote on them separately.
Yep.
Clerk, you read number nineteen, please, on the agenda.
Items nineteen and twenty-four are, item nineteen is an ordinance offered by Counsel Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby adjust the maximum number of taxi vehicle permits issued by the city council. Item number twenty-four is an ordinance offered by Counsel Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president, an ordinance replacing the special license for extended hours of operations with a license to operate during restricted business days and or hours.
Counsel DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the number of taxis, a few representatives from Encore recently, over the last week or two, think that this new number is still insufficient, and they were looking for some additional. I think they were looking for 70 total, and I thought that was a little excessive, and I think the clerk has some information if perhaps we can have a number on a temporary basis and pull them back so they're not on the books forever.
Right.
If the clerk wants to indulge us about that.
If I could, so while this discussion was ensuing, I thought about what was most prudent to do and what, what we think might be a good idea. To maybe to immediately go from 32 to 72 might be a big push. So I don't know that that should be our plan, but if you entrust in me for a temporary basis, we'll, we can raise the number to the 32 or 40, somewhere in that range, and then allow me on a temporary basis, only once, for up to six months, to allow 20 to 25 extra cabs to be out there. It would still be in accordance with our ordinance. No one company could own more than 80 percent. We would still follow all the rules and regulations. They'd have to do everything in accordance with the law, but we don't want to be in a position where we only issue the 32. We do need extras, and we hand-tied ourselves because it takes about six weeks to two months to pass an ordinance, to draft it, pass it, go forward. So I don't know if that's something that is palatable to the board, otherwise, if you wanted to increase it a little bit more, again, it's all, all your decision, but I feel that if you, if you don't want to do such a drastic increase and still give some type of option in case it is necessary, because we really don't know what's going to go on down there, and with the rest of the city. Don't forget, we talk about one part of the city, but, you know, those cabs might be going down there, and now the rest of the city needs, needs vehicles. So, you know, we don't want to forget the entire city, you know, because of one parcel also. So this might give us that option, that balance. It's just a recommendation. It's your choice what you like to do, but I thought that it, it would give us a temporary out for a short term, and then we can move forward. If we see that we need them permanently, then I can bring it back, draft a new one and, and put it before the council. So again, it's up to you. I just wanted to give you that option.
One of their concerns was folks coming from Logan. They would obviously have a way here because there's plenty of cabs at the airport, but getting them back there would be another issue. I don't mind a temporary basis. I just maybe a little longer than, what'd you say, a month?
No, I said six months, actually.
Six months, six months is fine. What the number shall be, I don't know, but I'm fine with a temporary basis.
Counselor Hanlon, and then Counsel Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just through you to our clerk. On the, on the six-month thing, if, if it doesn't work, and we don't need 72 cabs or whatever the final number will be, and we only need half of them, what's the arrangement that we'd use to cut that remaining group in half? Who goes first, who goes last?
So I'm only, if you're going to give me an authority, the authority is only for a temporary basis. If you're going to officially name them, I don't have that authority. That's your authority. So you, I would come back to you, the, obviously the cab companies and working with the Encore and other members of, of the government will, we will say, well, you know, I issued 20 extra, we really only need a 10, so that's, that's going to be the new number, so we need 42 or 50, you know? It's just something that, so we can have that, that gift, you know? God forbid we need it. Again, it was just an option that I had, I had thought of. I don't know if it's going to work, but I, I thought that we, it's better to have some type of option rather than to hand tie us with such a small number where I can understand their point with the amount of people coming to that, that facility every day, and we do want to try to, you know, not have people take cars and utilize all the other transit, that this might be a way to, to at least alleviate it for a temporary period, and then I'll work with you to make sure that the numbers are correct.
No, that, that's, that's good. And the other thing is that, so we're going to give out, let's say, whatever it is, an amount of additional licenses, and they're absolutely over in six months unless we grant an extension to them.
Correct, and I, and I do not want the authority to give that extension either. I want you to grant me the authority, six months maximum, only once. I do not want, I don't like having that authority. I want you to make that decision. That isn't, that's your job. My job is just an agent for you, but I think on a temporary basis it works.
And one other, one other question is that the, the fee. I know the fee for regular cab, so would this fee be cut down a little bit?
Yeah, I, we can, we can do a prorated one, is what I would do, so it'd be for those months.
Good enough. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Matusky, and then Counsel McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, June 23rd is 13 days from now. When did the Encore people tell you this?
I received an email a couple of weeks ago. Well, I think when we were, when we were, remember I spoke a couple of meetings ago about the original change? They had noticed that, they didn't realize that we capped it at all, so I think that's, they didn't realize until we had this piece in the, in the newspaper that we actually put a cap on how many taxis a lot of cities don't. So that's when they said, oh, well, if you're capping it, we should cap it at a higher number because we, we feel it might need that. And, and I, I can agree on both ends, you know, but to, to put it to that number, it, it puts the current business man, you know, if he really wants, the person wants to buy it, he has to pay for all those licenses right now without knowing if, if they're going to work. With my, my, the way I want to do it, just temporarily, you can see how it works. You won't have to put out all that money.
Well, it's a safe gap measure.
Correct.
So it'll only be Everett licensed taxis can, are the ones that work out.
Yeah, currently, there's only one. So if you issue another licensed company, there will be, but currently, there's only one licensed taxi, taxi company.
I mean, you know, a person in business, I mean, these have to be half-decent taxis.
Correct.
I mean, not...
They're inspected by the police annually.
Right, but I mean...
Under our regulations.
Coming from Logan Airport and so forth, they have to be almost like a limousine taxi. But anyway, you know, we just found out tonight, Mr. President, that they're giving a tour on Wednesday for the city council only. Of course, the president didn't know this. Counselor McKinnon didn't know it, and I just found out an hour ago. I don't get it, you know? I really don't get it, and I don't want to seem like some kind of crybaby up here, but Mr. Hanlon didn't know about it about Wednesday. You said that in the back. I mean, we all want to try to be nice here, but this is, you know, whatever happened to the old-fashioned days when you mail an invitation, you know, this email thing is a nice, nice thing, and you just found out in an email, somebody could have called you, we might need more taxis, you know? But I don't, I don't consider a professional, to be honest with you, but, you know, the Marlin Taxi Company has been around for a long time, they're decent people. I just hope that he has the right amount of taxis to, to handle this type of thing, but, you know, it's a little frustrating and, you know, I, I don't consider a professional for a $3 billion operation, I'm sorry, to find out that they're giving a tour on Wednesday tonight. And then to get the, the soft opening, so-called, whatever that means, you got to go through red tape, the email, you got to get a wristband, holy moly. I got news for you. My sister's coming in from California. I'll be there the 20th. I hope they get my wristband, but, you know, this is like romper room, I'm telling you. You know, it, the thing is a beautiful thing, and I want it to be successful, but maybe I'm a little old-fashioned, but there's something ain't right here. Thank you.
Counsel McGlaughlin and Counsel Capone.
First, let me thank Counsel Matusky because it's the first time I heard that it's a tour on Wednesday, so I didn't even know that was happening.
None of us know.
Okay, well, thank you for the information. Back to the point being that I was just talking with some of my colleagues, if there is a certain number, will there be, Marlin Taxi has the biggest number of taxi licenses in the city. Does he have that number of vehicles to be able to service?
Currently, he has...
A higher number?
I can't tell you what he has.
Right.
I won't lie, and again, we, I could only issue it if they had it and wanted to, to open them.
But...
I don't know how many he has. I know he just purchased, I don't want to use a number, maybe 10, maybe 15.
Purchase something new.
Newer, newer cabs, I do know that, because he does have, he is going to be going down to the casino area. I mean, he was in my office maybe two or three weeks ago, we were briefly discussing the new ordinance that, that increased that gave him back his original 25 licenses, which was, which he was supposed to have and for some reason wasn't, he did not have. So we had, we had a brief discussion about that. I did not discuss this temporary thing with him yet, just so you know, but this is just something new. We just, you know, I just heard about this, and I, that was more of an idea off, off the top of my head. Again, I don't, I don't know that you want to agree with me, but I just feel that we need, they are right, they're probably going to need something, and at least to give that opportunity for a temporary vehicle. So if they have some backup cars that they can throw in, we can do that for a little while, and then if, if it's working, obviously they'll, you know, if they're making money, they're going to purchase more cars and, and do it, right? If they have a few extras laying around, which they may, I, again, I don't know how the cab business works or how he works.
I think the need is there, and I think that...
Yeah.
What Counsel DePiero was saying was it's much needed, but I'm wondering if they can't service that number, does it give another company an opportunity to come into the city?
Yeah.
Or how do we meet the quota?
The current, the current company, no company can own more than 80 percent, is all it says. That doesn't mean they have to own 80 percent. It means they can't own more than 80 percent.
Okay.
No one company, we, we, we did not, so there was no monopoly, there was not only one company. You, you guys put a provision in back in, the council put it in 2016, that provision for 80 percent. So that way, it, it still gave that person the majority of them, but not all of them.
Okay. I'll, I'll vote whatever way the wish of my colleagues are. I would just, I wish we had a little bit more time to hear from them, to know whether or not they'd be able to service the need.
And, and, yeah.
But I will support the wish of my colleagues and whatever we think is right, because we're kind of shooting from the hip for a little bit, but we need to get them in the city some way, somehow.
Yeah, yeah.
We need to get them into Everett in 13 days.
Counsel Capone and Counsel DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our clerk. Right now, how many do we have? Did you say 32?
Well, because I don't know if you remember, there, there was some confusion in the old ordinance that took away seven licenses from the, the current licensee, which was not correct. I did my due diligence and went back to the, the old licenses. He was supposed to receive 25.
Okay.
So that way that we're in compliance with this law, we had to increase seven, that way he would have no more than 80 percent.
80 percent, right.
So 32 is the current number that I had proposed, because it just gets you at that minimum 80 threshold.
Okay.
You can increase it from there. You don't have to go to the 72.
Sure.
You can go to a little more if you want some more stationary ones, and then decide if you want to give me that authority.
And I think it may have been our last meeting or one before that, we were kicking around, were we just talking about increasing? Did we talk about a number at all at that point in time or no?
I, I had drafted a number for 32.
Okay.
That was it.
Just to bring us to current compliance.
Just to bring you compliance.
Okay.
It was solely up to the, this board.
Okay.
I only, I didn't want to throw out a figment number. I just put it right at the 80 percent. I think it's like 79 and change.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure we were in compliance with the other part of our law.
Okay, no, I think that's good. I would say that with the influx of what's going to happen, there's going to be a great need to get from the casino out, and we want to make sure that we're not doing, as has been mentioned by other people, we don't want to be doing a disservice to the rest of our residents who may not be going from the casino somewhere else to the airport, but, you know, people who may need to go from point A to point B within the city. So we want to make sure that there's plenty of opportunity for them. By allowing more licenses, we allow other companies to come in and help to service that if the, by increasing the number of licenses, the current company would be able to increase the number of vehicles it had, as long as it didn't exceed the 80 percent. So I, I would recommend we increase the license up to 50, and then, you know, we could, as the clerk had suggested, perhaps we could empower him to increase that number if need be.
No more than...
No more than six months with a cap of, you know, like another, you know, 15 to 20 cabs, and then any renewals or anything of that nature would, would have to come before the council.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So.
I second that motion.
I'll second, but on the motion, Counsel Florio.
Well, that's fine.
You're satisfied?
Because, yeah, I was going to recommend similar, that we go up to a certain point, and then on a temporary basis, you do the other 20 or whatever, and then if he sees that you need more, at that point, we can make those permanent and then give them a little more temporary to work with. So I'm okay with that. But they also have Lyft and...
Uber.
Uber there, right, also?
Correct. They'll, it'll be, I, I, it's in a little different area. I think it's a little bit more on the front, not directly, but it will be near the top of the driveway instead of all the way in, I guess. I got some information over the last week. So, but yes, they'll be right there.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Still on the motion, Counsel Napolitano.
Yeah, on the motion. I mean, I, I agree. You've got Lyft and Uber that's going to be augmenting this. We don't want to open up such a, such a list, amount of licenses that we have a problem later. I think the right, the motion is fine. You know, 50 is a, is a reasonable amount. It opens the door for another company to come in with numbers, you know, to be able to put some additional cabs out there. And initially, with the Encore, with the Encore traffic plan, didn't they also mention that the water shuttle goes to Logan?
Yes, it does.
So they already have a built-in backup there as well. So I mean, I understand their concerns about 70 cabs or 72 cabs because they're proximity, close proximity to Boston. But again, we can't, we can't put the burden on the city of Everett exclusively where a resident cannot get a cab. Fortunately, with, with, you know, social driving, you know, Lyft and Uber, there's an entire generation of, of residents that are utilizing that service before they even think about picking up a phone for a cab. So I think it's a good motion. You know, 50 gives us a good solid number, reflective of the transition we're going through today, having a cushion of 25 if the need arise. I, I fully support this motion.
Okay, one more speaker on that motion. Counsel Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through it to our clerk. Normally, when we give out a license, excuse my bad...
No, that's okay.
Normally, when we give out a license, we, we give it out, coming down to the clerk's office, filling out an application, and, and supposedly having a place to park the vehicle. Now, I, I believe that these vehicles are going to be parked at, at the resort. So that, what I'm, what I'm trying to point out is if they come in and they get a license, and they're going to be able to park at the resort, like our cabs that are here now will, will they be also be able to come and park a cab in Everett Square?
Any taxi stand.
Park?
So, any taxi stand. When you're licensed in Everett, you can park in any taxi stand in Everett. So cabs have a, have a deal with the, obviously with the state. The law says that you can, you, you can, you know, park and, and drop off. Usually, you can't pick up in the same, in the same city. So they'll, Everett cabs will get called, be able to pick you up at the casino or anywhere else, but there's taxi stands on the property, and we have taxi stands located throughout the city. So if you're a licensed Everett company, you'll be able to stand at one of those taxi stands. It's not, this is not a license solely for Encore. We're, we're trying to accommodate a little bit, which will help them and the rest of the city, but it's, it's not solely for them. But it's not solely for them. But the license is a city license, so they'll be able to operate anywhere in the confines of the city of Everett.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
So can I read a motion? And Mr. Capone, you tell me if it sounds correct. To amend the current ordinance to change the number of taxis licensed from 32 to 50 and allow the city clerk to give no more than 20 taxis on a temporary basis for not more than six months. And any and all renewals and/or permanent license, licenses shall only be granted by the city council.
That's correct.
Good.
And we had a second on the motion. Counsel McGlaughlin, motion.
So we did post this. It went into the, into the, excuse me, newspapers. I'm going to ask if I could indulge, have legal counsel come up and just answer a question. If they feel this is, I did not amend this enough, then it needs to be reposted. Which I don't think I did, but I just feel more comfortable if somebody else checks my work.
Motion out to the city clerk before us.
Second motion.
All in favor, please.
City Solicitor.
Just state your name and position, please.
Good evening, members of the council. Keith Slattery, Assistant City Solicitor.
So I'm sorry, but the only reason I want you up is, so when you change the intent of a piece enough, we do have to repost it. Where we already knew we were going to increase, the only real change is giving me this temporary authority. I don't know that it was enough, but I feel like.
I would say it's the same scope and subject matter. So I would say that that's allowable.
Okay. I feel more, I feel more comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McGlaughlin on the motion.
Mr. President, just on the motion, just a clarification. So we are going to increase it by up to 50 licenses. But our clerk just said that he will, is being granted permission to go up to 20 additional from where we are.
So it's 50 is the solid number. You're going to allow me up to 20, six months only, God forbid.
But that would put us at 50.
If need be, if those 50 are being utilized and the cab companies are coming in, you know what? I need to put more cabs out there. And I can only do it for one time, six months. Any renewals, permanent licenses are coming back here. I'm not, I'm not doing, I don't have any of that authority.
I'm all set, Mr. President, thank you.
This is for ordainment now that, Mr. Slattery, help me with the ruling. Are you ready?
All set?
Yep. Ordainment, Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio. Counsel DePero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yes, zero nays, you have ordained the ordinance. Item number 24 is now before you.
Favorable action?
This was also enrolled. This is for ordainment. Yeah, I can explain it briefly if you want. I can briefly explain this if you'd like.
He's on 24.
Yeah, item number 24, yeah. Yep, I'm sorry. So this is an ordinance replacing the current special hours of license. We've changed it through our consultant. We've done some work, or he's done some work, changing it for extended hours of operation with a license to operate during restricted business days and/or hours. We changed it a little, the title a little. We've cleaned up some of the language and also allowed for one property that has maybe eight locations to allow them to get the license instead of having to individually license each place. And we will use the Encore as an example. They are one major facility with a multitude of businesses inside that are going to operate pretty much 24 hours a day, almost every single one. So instead of me having to issue 30 licenses a year to write it, they're still going to pay the same. It's just, it's allowing me to get one license. It makes it a lot easier, streamlined for my office. I use them as an example. There are a few other locations that would be, it would benefit. So you're still licensing them and you're still going to license all, it's going to be like an umbrella. You'll license each and every individual one, but under one umbrella license. Does that make sense?
Counsel Hanlon, go ahead.
What kind of bothers me about this is, and I understand it's for the resort and I have no problem with that at all. What I'm thinking about is that if we use this license and we allow someone else to get a special license, anybody, anybody around here, would that therefore force another company in competition with that person to get a license for special hours? And eventually, everybody will want special hours and going to have the city open 24 hours a day. Is that what we want? It's not what I want. So I'm just wondering how we can curtail that to make sure that.
Yeah, can I, I can briefly explain. So under the old Lord's Day license, you were a former clerk, so you remember, we used to issue those. We don't really issue Lord's Day licenses anymore because the state kind of grandfathered a lot of type of businesses in. They don't, they don't fall under that Lord's Day or special hours licenses. We do this only for businesses that are going to operate, depending on the type of business, between the hours of either 10 a, 10 p.m. and 6 a.m. or 11 p.m. and 6 a.m. Depending on the type of business, I'm a manufacturing or wholesale or, you know, store 24s, things like that. This is solely a license for anyone that is licensed under you. People that have general common vics and liquor licenses don't normally get this. Encore really wouldn't need it for certain parcels of their property because they're governed under the mass gaming. They have liquor licenses, but not all of them do. So this would just make it easier to put all those other shops under one license. On any other parcel, you will, say, another large company comes in, you're going to get a list of all their licensed locations and you'll determine if you want to grant, if you want to issue it under one umbrella or not. You don't have to. And you don't have to give each one the same license at the same time. That's your authority. That's what you do. You set conditions and timeframes. That's up to you. But that's only for the hours of either 10 or 11 up until 6 a.m. Anything before that would be a general license or, you know, part of their doing business as.
I'm really concerned about a few restaurants in the city that are open up and that would want to stay open for 24 hours.
We wouldn't, we wouldn't, this license doesn't cover them because they're licensed under the liquor board. The liquor board under state law, anyone that serves liquor cannot open past 2 a.m. And in this city, 1 a.m. So, and I think they can't open before 9 or 10, there's a time in the morning. So they're governed totally different. This is really to do with licensees of yours. And Encore is a licensee of yours because they have multiple licenses that are governed under this.
I have no trouble with Encore. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel, Counsel McGlaughlin and then Counsel Matusky.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Just so I understand, so you have a property like the Gateway Mall or the Shopping Plaza on Ferry Street? And one of those businesses were to be opened on the 10 p.m. or 11 p.m.?
Yep. Say one person owned all of it and they wanted to get a license for everyone, they could do that. But it still would be at your discretion.
When you say owned all of it though, so a big company owns the Gateway Mall. They own all of the mall. Even though it's individual stores, it's owned by one.
Conglomerate.
Conglomerate. He could apply or she, the company could apply for 24 hours to open up the whole Gateway Mall.
Right, but they'd have to list all the businesses in there and you'd have to, you'd have to allow it for each and every license.
I, right. But I think if we allowed it for, and I'm not against it for Encore, but are we just setting a bad precedent? Again, like I said, Ferry Street, Walgreens, now I think they're closed, they close at midnight, so it's a little different.
So the difference is, Walgreens isn't a licensee of yours. The Gateway Plaza isn't a licensee of yours. Encore is. So this is governing city council licensees.
What are the potentials, Mr. Clerk?
Any repair shop, anything like that, which we already do that, you know?
No, just thinking, is there any one location that has multiple businesses?
That you license?
That we license.
No. A couple repair shops would be the biggest thing that you license. There's a property that has like three or four.
Okay. Again, I'm, not that I'm against it, I'm just trying to think, I'll tie the box a little bit so that we not open it up.
I like the back and forth. Sometimes I, doesn't mean I do everything correct. So I'd rather you try to catch it now, but I think we've done a pretty good job of catching it.
So just a few repair shops could be the only potential.
I mean, off the top of my head, what I can think of.
Okay.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Matusky and Counsel Napolitano.
I'm just curious. Item number nine is regulate outdoor dining. Is that the same department as this?
No, it is not. There'll be one of the attorneys here to speak on that after, along with Mr. Souza. This is drafted under planning. It's a different piece.
And is this going to be a yearly renewal?
The special hours? Yes, it currently is. We are, this already exists. We do this for a few businesses.
The hot dog stand?
Yep, is one of them. We've done it for Best Buy every year. There are a few businesses that do it.
So it's a yearly renewal?
Correct.
Okay.
For certain businesses, and I shouldn't say it's all under your authority. There are some other ones, but generally it's your licenses. And anyone that falls under certain categories.
Good.
But it's always a yearly review. You don't have to review, renew it every year.
Thank you.
It's at your discretion.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Napolitano and Counsel Capone.
Thank you. Through the president, Mr. Clerk. So this would, this actually would be more along the lines of phase two. Now, we know after the casino opens, within a year or two years after, they're going to convert that parking section on the opposite side into a second, potentially bringing in a developer, second hotel and entertainment section. That'll include restaurants, other activities. That's where I would think we would be seeing the most likely extension of this type of a license beyond that. In that respect, you know, we've got to maintain some vision of what's going to go on down there. This is not going to be strictly the building that's down there right now. They didn't spend all that money just to develop that building. We all know the gambling capacity of that building is actually larger than the combined win Encore and Vegas. So it's the, the number of beds, the number of rooms that are far less than the capacity of that casino. That's why there's a second phase in this. They'll develop it across the park, across 99. And that will be the type of operation that will require this type of license again. But I think that's where we're going to be looking at this. And again, if we're taking it on a case-by-case business basis, we really don't have to worry about any other businesses sneaking through or applying to because we make that call. And, you know, a single business, Gateway Mall, something like that, I wouldn't see the need. A hotel with restaurants with other amenities, with entertainment center, a little different. So I think that's the intent and that's where we'll see another, that's where we'll see that license. I mean, is that correct, Mr. Clerk? Would you agree that the?
I do agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Capone and Counsel McKinnon.
Through you to our clerk. So we've got the, the intent is the umbrella approach. If you had one petition who had multiple locations, entities, et cetera. As far as fees go, is it one fee? Is it enhanced fee? It's still the same thing. If you've got eight locations.
It's like I'm licensing all of them. I'm not, you know, they're not going to pay one fee for it.
I'm good, thank you very much.
Counsel McKinnon.
Real quick, and maybe a clerk can answer this. If in fact, we umbrella these like eight, nine, 10 licenses under one company. None in specific, actually. So if we do that and then there's a problem with just one of them, what happens then?
It's still like they have a separate license. It's one. You can, you can always call them back before you. You can always revoke licenses, amend hours.
We wouldn't be looking at the whole umbrella as a?
I don't think so.
We would be looking at just that one individual?
When I issue the license, it's going to have every name of every business that's under that umbrella.
And would it say solely responsible for that?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Would it be solely responsible for their own license under that umbrella?
Yes. Encore's, see, I'm using Encore as the example because it's the one I can think of that's definitely going to use this if we do it. You know, they're, everyone leases under them. They're going to make sure everything's done correctly. And if they're not, then we have to address that one business. But we'll address it through them also because they'll be the main license holder.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. This is for ordainment.
Does that last speaker?
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Matusky.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yes, zero nays, you have so ordained the ordinance. There is still some more on the sign-in sheet. Mr. St. Louis has a few here. Items 10, 14, 15, and 25, I believe. Yeah.
Those 10, 14, 15?
So you might, you might want to hold off on 14, though that's going to be the reports and the final vote of the budget. So why don't you do 10, 15, and 25? And then we can do the budget ones maybe collectively at some point, whenever you're ready.
Second, all in favor? You guys have it? Can we read number 10 on the agenda, please?
Item number 10 is an ordinance offered by Counsel Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president that an ordinance amending Article Four of Section 17 news racks be approved by the Everett City Council. Item number 15 is a resolution offered by Counsel Wayne Matusky that the city engineer appear at the next meeting to update the paving work being done on Bow Street at the request of residents. And item number 25 is a resolution offered by Counselors Michael McGlaughlin, Fred Capone, and Richard J. Delasola Jr. that the DPW director provide an update for the maintenance schedule for the community parking lot on Floyd Street at the request of area residents.
St. Louis and Mr. Slattery.
I just have it. Just state your name, please, for the record.
Greg St. Louis, DPW Director.
Keith Slattery, Assistant City Solicitor.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. President, on item number 10, there was some questions in committee when we had this there last week. Can you just quickly explain the intent and kind of give a brief overview of this?
So certainly with the amount of development coming into town and the sign pollution, street clutter in general, when I worked in the city of Cambridge, news racks became an overwhelming issue to them. What do they look like? Where are they placed? How are they maintained? There's any number of headaches associated with this. So this ordinance is designed to hopefully rein in some of that potential that we see. We don't want 15, 20 of these in one location. We don't want them strewn about the streets. We don't want people just throwing newspapers on the ground. Just makes more work for us. So with sanitation costs the way they are and recycling the way it is, we're looking to minimize this and make it relevant newsstands as opposed to any and everybody everywhere.
And Mr. St. Louis, how do we section, how do we section these from a certain amount per square footage? A certain amount per district? Or how are they sectioned?
So I believe we had proposed limiting the number per linear foot and on arterial ways.
Yes.
You know, certainly, there's a couple right now predominantly, I think, of the Dunkin' Donuts in town on private property. You know, we're just trying to reduce that, that noise and street pollution that you see in some other communities.
And the other thing is we're not infringing upon anybody's freedom of speech or freedom of?
A lot of it is to put the vendors on notice of their responsibility to, to the city, keep it free from sometimes the blight that they provide by not maintaining their equipment and also giving a little uniformity to the types of vending machines that they can put out there.
So this does not prevent somebody from having a stack of newspapers and walking around just tanning them out, right? I mean, I was on Broadway on Saturday at a friend's house and there was an individual walking by on Broadway. I think they were handing out the Metro or something. And they handed us each a newspaper. Does this prevent that from, from occurrence?
It's like a peddling license as much as anything.
Yeah, that would be a different license.
Okay, so that's, that doesn't fall under this?
No, it doesn't. That's enforceable through, and I would have to look it up, but that's enforceable through another ordinance.
Okay, and who is going to enforce this ordinance?
The licensing authority is the city clerk for news racks.
I am. But please note that I cannot issue a license unless DPW engineering signs off on it. I don't know the, you know, where they're supposed to be placed. So they're going to make sure, they handle that part, give me a sign off, and then I'm the licensing authority once that happens.
So we want to make sure that, you know, it doesn't block front doors, ADA access, it's?
Thank you.
Oh, that was a question, is the sidewalk's wide enough to be able to? Oh, that was the question. Is the sidewalks wide enough to be able to put these on? I know we need a four-foot sidewalk for ADA compliance. Are our sidewalks on Lower Broadway wide enough that they can handle, I mean, not handle, but give enough clearance for ADA compliance?
Right. So in a number of areas of town, no, the sidewalks aren't wide enough to also support, depending on the size of the box. And certainly, we're trying to make the box size somewhat uniform. But there are some oversized sidewalks in town, and we would expect some of those locations.
And the last thing on this, I'm just gonna say is, they, we had some really nice art work done on some of our boxes throughout the community the last few weeks by some of the students. And the next day, I went out and it was already graffitied on it. It made me sick to see that, that that happened so quickly. The students spent so much time on this art work, and then it's destroyed, you know, covered over and it's destroyed so quickly. Will we be able to stay on top of these, to maintain these, so that they're not out of control and we're not seeing? Can't stop it from happening, unfortunately, as sad as that is. But do you feel as though we'll be able to maintain? I'll be honest, I was in favor of what Counselor DePiero, I think, had proposed before, was a auditorium on these, and kinda put none, and then see how it plays out later on. But I don't think we can do that. That's what I would like to see happen.
I think ISD will do, as part of their regular patrols, they'll keep an eye out for it, but also if anything gets reported, they'll be followed up on.
And we specifically included language in this that says something to the extent of, if we notify you as the owner of the unit and you do not remedy the situation, I'm literally gonna throw it in the trash.
We're gonna remove it.
I'm gonna remove it from the public way. I'm gonna remove the nuisance. I wanted that power straight up, because I've, I've seen it happen too many times. If you wanna maintain it, you wanna invest value in it, absolutely, welcome to the city. But if you're gonna drop it and run?
And we're clear to be able to have our DPW go down and put it in the back of a truck and call it a day with it? Is that correct? That language is in there, Greg?
My goal is to hold it for, I think I put two days in there. Put in, pick up, hold it for two days. You don't come get it, I'm getting rid of it.
And that's in the ordinance, though?
It is.
Appreciate the hard work on the ordinance. I'm fully in support of it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to our guests. Good evening. Is the scope of this, are we looking strictly public property? Are we looking to go into private property at all, or no?
The scope, this is for public property.
Public, okay. Thank you. No other questions? Thank you.
Any more questions for our guest?
Mr. President, through you for Counselor.
Counselor Simonelli?
How many of these boxes will we be, or are there?
There's no limit in the ordinance.
Sure did we?
To say, not to say it's self-limiting, I'd say there's a handful in town currently, again, predominantly at, at some of the convenience stores and Dunkin' Donuts-type facilities.
Which is on private property.
Which is on private property.
They're restricted in, in size and color, and there's other functionality issues built into the ordinance that will be self-restricting as well.
The reason we don't restrict how many, sorry to interrupt, would be for freedom of speech.
First Amendment.
You know, we have First Amendment rights that we don't wanna infringe on.
My, my, my fault thought is that, Mr. President, that the size of the box and all that, the color and all, then all of a sudden, we have 3,000, if we're using that as the assumption.
Yeah, no, I mean, there's still discretion. I mean, myself and, and Mr. St. Louis will use our discretion. The reason we wanted to, you know, strengthen up the ordinance a little bit, we discussed this a few times, was, one, yes, to try to set some colors, some parameters, some sizes, and to put them in certain areas. You know, you can't just limit them completely, because, again, there is free speech, and we don't wanna get sued for that, for no reason. But we do wanna keep the city clean, respectable, and not have them everywhere. So if you ever seen in Cambridge, in the downtown Cambridge, there's like 50 tied up by chains in the middle. It looks terrible. So those are the things we're trying to avoid. So that's what our thought process was. And I do agree that we, the only reason we didn't think of a number here was because we didn't wanna put ourselves in the potential of getting sued. So we figured this, we can use our own discretion. Always, I always work with legal counsel, I'm sure Mr. St. Louis does also. And we'll just use our best judgment.
No more questions? Counselor McGlaughlin?
Just the last question is, do we have a map of what Lower Broadway will look like in 13 days from now, with these boxes or these newsstands? Has anybody, you said it's by this linear footage, Greg? So has anybody went out there and measured the area to see what, what at max could be?
I would say the extent of Lower Broadway is maybe 3,000 feet. It's certainly still gonna depend on individual licenses, individual companies. If someone comes in with a canary yellow, seven-foot-tall newsstand, you know, we might be able to reject that outright. Whereas if the Metro wants to put a newsstand at a bus stop, that'd be completely within reason.
And last question, do you know what the square, the linear per square foot is? And you can give it to me later if you don't off the top of your head, but what it is per newsstand? So X amount of linear feet gets two newsstands, or whatever that ratio is?
No, it's, it's gonna be subject to where are the handicap ramps, where are the other street furniture? It's gonna be a location-by-location basis.
Thank you.
Counsel, Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you. I just wanna make sure I'm clear, because I thought we said the scope was public, and then there was some discussion about on private property. External? Or if it's gonna go on private property, are we talking about external? Units that are gonna be on the external part of the property, or?
The only licenses we're reserving for issuance would be for public property. Private property?
I just got confused, because I think one of the councils asked about a box that was on Dunkin' Donut property, so.
That was just an example of where they are currently?
Oh, where they are, as opposed to what we would be doing. Okay. All right, thank you.
Any more questions for our guest? Second, ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Just to note, this is for enrollment. Counselor Capone?
Yes.
Counselor DePiero?
Yes.
Counselor Hanlon?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Counselor Napolitano?
Yes.
Counselor Simonelli?
Yes.
President Delisola?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero nays. You have so enrolled the ordinance. Item 15 is now before you.
Item 15, please. Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to, to our guests. I think a little earlier this evening, you had mentioned that Bow Street was gonna be paved in the fall. Is there any other work that has to be done? I know that there was work done while, is there anything left, or is it just paving that's left?
So it's my understanding that water work was done on the street a number of years ago.
Yep.
In review with the gas company recently. The gas is plastic in that area, so that's all set. There are some minor sewer repairs that need to be conducted that are, we're assuming gonna see a number of sewer repairs done in that area as part of the wind mitigation. So when that contract goes out, I'm gonna do some minor repairs in that area. And other than that, Bow Street was used often as a detour during the wind construction, so it kinda prohibited full reconstruction of that corridor in the first place.
So those other minor repairs, those will be done prior to the paving?
A number of them are trenchless, but I believe there are a couple spot repairs typically at services.
Okay. Do you think that the spot repairs, we talking after or before?
It would be before.
Before, okay, great. Thank you very much.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, just quickly, I have noticed that they've knocked down several additional buildings down on that is between Broadway and Bow Street. Is there, as you come north on 99, they've knocked down those buildings? Is there gonna be a lane to circle onto the other side of Broadway? Was that something that was planned, Greg? Or what is the purpose of knocking down those buildings that were the divider between Bow Street and Broadway?
It's my understanding that developer purchased any number of properties that are vacant and the uses are no longer to be continued. I think they were honestly getting rid of the visual impediment as much as anything. Ninety percent of those utilities are being cut and capped at the main. There's a couple water lines being maintained for irrigation, so that they can maintain a grass cover in those areas.
So will that area become part of the street? That's what my question is, or is that gonna stay?
It's held privately. So all that property, in my knowledge, is held privately.
Okay. So it will stay just an open lot?
Counselor Matusky?
Thank you, Mr. St. Louis, for being here this evening. It's my understanding that Mr. Oferius Julio was down on Bow Street, and he talked to at least three or four residents that I know over the weekend. I find that very, you know, a nice thing that he took the time to go down. But Bow Street will be completed by?
Looking to reconstruct it this fall.
This fall. There's a lot, the street is a complete disaster, as you know. The sidewalks were done recent, seems to me, not that long ago, the sidewalks.
Depends on the section of the road.
The section, okay. The sooner the better down there. Those people have put up a lot during this construction phase, you know, with casinos and so forth. And, you know, a lot of time, people used Bow Street because they couldn't use Broadway. But needless to say, Mr. Julius from the engineering department took the time to speak to the residents on Bow Street, and I thought that was a good idea. So with that, and again, I wanna compliment you on Second Street. That company, I hope you hire the same company to do this street that did Second Street. They're professional, they're quick. Of course, I know it goes out the bid, but there's some companies that they're doing some work in the city that take way too long to complete a project. Timely fashion is what, you know, people are looking for. It's a big obstacle course in Everett. We've got so much happening. So, but I'm glad to hear Bow Street will finally be improved. So I wanna thank you. This is my, my piece. So I wanna thank you for appearing this evening.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. All in favor? All in favor? All in favor? All in pause, the ayes have it?
Last one is item 25, which I've already read.
Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to city engineer. I know, I know that there was a letter that was sent out from you with regards to the maintenance schedule, that kinda stuff. One thing that I'm getting from the residents is that rather than going in and maintaining it on and on, because people, I guess, are driving on it and parking on it, is there a way that we could just make it additional parking for the neighborhood? Parking's always a premium.
So do away with the mulch planting beds and add more parking. Okay. I would have to look at where the right-of-way line is. Certainly, there, there's been a number of activities in that area that we do not condone and we need to rein in. I've heard news of oil changes being done on a regular basis in there. As anyone can imagine, I imagine, you know, one car here, one car there, no big deal. Then you get contamination. You don't need all that. I don't need the additional headaches. So if, if it's come to a point where people are escalating that concern to me, I'm gonna have to look into what uses are going on down there. Certainly, you know, the litter gets picked up regularly, the mulch beds get readdressed.
Yeah, the concern that some of the residents had relayed is, you know, okay, it looks nice. You know, there is all that expense of maintaining it, but even aside from that, take that out of the mix completely. Parking is such a premium in this community. If we could allot another parking spot or two, depending on what we got for space there, it's something that they wanted us to look into.
It is tight, but I can look at restriping it or see what efficiencies there are.
Great. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counselor McGlaughlin?
Thanks, Mr. President. That was one of the concerns. The other was the, some activity that has been happening in that parking lot, as we've talked about, Greg. The third question was the snow. One of the reasons why they snow in the wintertime, there's nowhere to really put the snow, and they're just wondering if they've made additional spots, could push it into one of the spots and create a snow pile and clean the lot easier, more efficient, quicker, as we know that, you know, just stockpiling it in one spot, instead of having the circumference of the whole place be a mulch bed, which is much more difficult in the wintertime to move the snow around in that parking lot. So they were wondering if that would be able to be something that would just help speed up the process of cleaning that lot for your guys and also for the residents who do park there during snow emergencies and anytime in winter in the snow. So your guys do do a good job of trying to maintain it as much as possible, but, you know, it's a smaller lot compared to a whole lot of else that's going on in the city, in the city on a daily basis. So if you could look into those for the residents down there, I think they would really appreciate the option of having some additional parking, and it would play a role to the winter needs as well. So if you could just give us an email back with your, your thought or recommendation of what could happen, we would appreciate to be able to notify the residents down there of what we can do with that mulch bed on the perimeter of the parking lot.
As you're aware, any number of dead ends in the city are difficult to maintain on their own. You had a couple curb stops into the mix.
Yeah, no, it's, and it's, and it's not even, it's just you guys would, your department would be easier maintaining in the wintertime. If you had a isolated place, you could just push the snow and make it, you know, a snowbank for the winter. Would be easier for your, for your guys as well, because you're right, it's a complicated lot as it is. And then you add some obstacles in there, it's almost impossible. So thank you for your due diligence, and I look forward to working with you on this.
Thank you.
There's no more speakers?
Mr. President, we'll make a motion to refer item 25.
Thank you, J. Thank you very much. Counsel, would you want a letter sent to us, or you wanna, what do you wanna do with this piece?
I apologize, Mr. President. I thought you were gonna speak on. Yeah, if we could refer this back to a sponsor, but also to just ask Mr. St. Louis to send us a letter or an email, just so that we can notify the neighbors that have contacted three of us and, I'm sure, other colleagues, and we can just communicate with them via an email would be more than sufficient for this.
Have a second? Second? All in favor? All in pause, the ayes have it?
Before we go too much?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and take item 30.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it? Can we read number 30 on the agenda, please?
Mr. President, item 30 is a resolution offered by Counselors Anthony DePiero and Counselor, Counselor Rosa DeFlorio, that the administration consider placing a Cataldo Strong memorial at the Central Ave playground to honor and commemorate the life and contributions of Assilia Cataldo-Materato.
Counsel DePiero?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't speak for myself here. I know every one of my colleagues knows what a wonderful and caring person Assilia was. Counselor DeFlorio and I thought this would be a nice idea to keep her spirit alive in the area she grew up in, on Central Ave. She was an amazing mother and citizen, having served either in an elected or volunteer capacity for the majority of her life. I think this could be a testament to her contributions to this community, and the theme of Cataldo Strong is what the family has been promoting as they raise funds in her memory. So I thought that would be what it should be named after. Thank you.
Absolutely. Counselor Florio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also, I know that, obviously, everybody that knew Assilia, she was like, as soon as she walked in the room, she was just a sunshine. She just brought sunshine to everybody. There wasn't a bad word that anybody could ever say over this woman. So, and, you know, I know people saying, you know, she was an elected official. She volunteered a lot of her time, whether it was St. Anthony's, Kiwanis. So my recommendation is that, number one, that I feel that we should all be on this piece. I know every one of us feels the same way. But also, I wanted to see if we could get even the school committee involved, because where she was on the school committee, and maybe we can refer it to them, because school committee woman counsel Cadillo had also recommended something. So if we could send it to the school committee, maybe they could put something very, you know, small. Nothing, nothing has to be big. Memories don't have to be big. Memories are held in our hearts. And to see if they could do something also in going to park near the school. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I do appreciate the sponsor mentioning the other members. I was gonna ask if those members of the president, if we could be put on it, because as they both have said, Assilia was a beautiful spirit. I don't think there wasn't a person in the city that she didn't come in contact with that didn't love her. She put a ton of time in with the Kiwanis, St. Anthony's. Anyone who met her knew how wonderful she was. So I think that it is a very fitting tribute, and I think the idea to send along, you know, a little bit of an idea to the school department, that perhaps they should do something there, I think is excellent. So I commend the sponsors. I thank them for adding us to it, and I think that Assilia is definitely a resident we should never, ever forget.
Absolutely. Counselor McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, I was just going to echo the comments of Counselor Capone and, and.
Mr. President, I was just going to echo the comments of Counsel Capone and congratulate both of my colleagues who put this forward this evening. Growing up on Highland Ave and the neighborhood with the Cecilia's family most of my life, and her brother being a childhood friend of mine, I am honored and thankful to my colleagues that have allowed us to put our names to this piece this evening, but to, uh, to also just echo the comments that had been said tonight, that you meet very few special individuals you'll never forget in your life, and she is one of them to all of us on this body and through this community. And, um, I'm honored to be able to place my name on this this evening, but to congratulate Counsel DePiero and Counsel DeFlorio for putting this forward, because it is something that, uh, our city should, uh, should embrace openly. Thank you.
Any more speakers? I just want to echo the words from the chair. This is probably the best piece I've seen up here for many, many years. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, I move that we refer this to the administration and request that they work with the school department, um, in planning this out with us as well, uh, going forward, and that we add the entire body to it as well.
I just want to make a quick announcement before we vote. I just want to say, her daughter Matar is in the audience, in the back, and is sitting here very patiently for this piece. Thank you very much.
The motion was to refer to the administration, uh, and request that they work together with us and the school department in planning this out, and that the entire body be out of the sponsors.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
On the pause, the ayes have it? Thank you. Anyone on the signing sheet?
Yes. We have, um, Mr. O'Donnell, uh, item 17 and 22. Actually, is he not yet? Uh, actually, I'm going to take a licensee first then. Um, could we take, uh, number eight, actually, off the agenda first?
Seconded. All in favor? Take number eight. Ayes have it? Read number eight on the agenda, please.
Number eight, Mr.... Mr. President, is a petition offered by Counsel Richard J. Delasola Jr. as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves a new motor vehicle dealer license for Parkway Auto Sales at 1673 Revere Beach Parkway. Can I...
Aye.
So it's, it's a current license, um, it's a new owner, but technically, he's already an owner on the parcel in back. He's just purchasing, uh, the business of the gentleman in the back, uh, who's selling it to him, so, uh, the, the owner is actually an existing owner. He owned the, there's two lots. If you, if you think of Everett Ave, there's the, the red one, and then, I don't know what the color, uh, the other one is on the Parkway, so that owner has purchased, sold the one in the back, and is now purchasing the, the front one on the Parkway from him. So they're already licensees, they've already been cored, they've, everything's been done, and it's an existing license, and it's not a, it's a new licensee for that location, but he's moving a hundred feet, uh, to a current, uh, existing place, so I just want to inform you, in case you didn't want to send this to committee.
Fable action. On the motion, Counsel Matuski? I'll sit. Counsel Hanlon? I'll sit. Okay, gentlemen?
So fable action on the order?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor?
No.
Oh, sorry, roll call vote.
Counsel Capone?
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio?
Yes.
Counsel DePiero? Counsel, um, Hanlon?
Yes.
Counsel Markey, um, Matuski?
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon?
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin? Counsel Napolitano?
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli?
Yes.
And President Delasola?
Yes.
Nine yays, zero nays, you have, uh, passed the petition. It'll be ready at, uh, noon on Wednesday. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we can take, uh, items 17 and 22, which will be our last two pieces on the agenda, um, and then we probably should take the budget pieces, and I think...
Read number 17 on the agenda, please.
Yes. Item number 17, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael J. McGlaughlin, that the administration give an immediate response to the idea of a 24-hour parking sticker enforcement for Ward 1 and Ward 6 due to casino patrons possibly taking up residential parking spots in these specific wards. And item 22, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel John Leo McKinnon, that Senator DiDio Medical and Representative McGonigal update the, did I read the right one? Yep, sorry. For medical cameras in ICU for patients entering ICU after serious complications after a medical issue.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, on item number 17, I would make a motion that we lay this on the table until August. Um, we had traffic, uh, update here last week, or week before that, uh, and understand the administration's hope is to, uh, if need be, to implement a, a plan as needed. Um, I'd like to have this, um, late table so that we can revisit it later in the summer after the opening of Encore, and give it some time to be able to work, to see how it plays out, so I'd make a motion that we lay item 17 on the calendar until August.
Seconded? All in favor? On the pause, the ayes have it? Can you read number 22 on the agenda? Counsel McKinnon?
Was there any written response from, uh, Representative McGonigal? He said he was going to be sending one.
Would you like me to read it?
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh, I am writing to, uh, the Everett City Council. I am writing to in response to the request that I watch HBO documentary Bleed Out and make inquiries into the placement of cameras to monitor patient care in intensive care units, ICUs. After having watched Bleed Out, I am deeply troubled by the presence of such malpractice in our medical system and sympathize with these patients and their families. No one should have to endure the trial of fighting for hospitals and insurance agencies to be held accountable for their mistakes, especially when one is already suffering from an injury or loss of loved one. I am moved by the borough's family story, and I will advocate to end medical malpractice wherever possible. At this point in time, there are no plans to introduce cameras in ICUs in Massachusetts. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services prohibits any breach of patient confidentiality in the form of medical data and information. In compliance with the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act, the HIPAA law, a patient's visual medical, uh, visual medical information is protected under privacy of law. Furthermore, Massachusetts state law both funds and requires compliance with HIPAA, as can be found in General Law, Part 1, Title 3, Chapter 29, Section 2A AAA. With that being said, I want to thank you for bringing the issue to my attention. I will continue to advocate against medical malpractice whenever possible. Respectfully, Joseph McGonigal, State Representative, 28th Middlesex District.
Thank you.
Your honor.
Uh, Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you.
The, um, I, I want to thank the rep for actually looking into that, watching the, uh, movie. It was quite horrific, the movie, so, uh, or the documentary, I should say. And he actually did get back to me, uh, and said that he was going to be writing that response, so, uh, I want to thank him publicly for that. Uh, there was that incident there where there was 150 monitored patients in an ICU in the middle part of the United States, and that was part of the documentary by one doctor. So it's unacceptable, you can't have it, uh, you know, and this woman suffered from that, so I'm glad that he actually looked into it, and, uh, here in Massachusetts, I believe, um, they're not looking forward to doing anything like that. That's what he told me, so, um, I want to thank him, and I'll refer this back to sponsor.
Second.
On the motion, Counsel Hanlon?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just a, just a, uh, a recommendation, that we have that letter, uh, by Representative McGonigal, uh, sent to each one of us. It's kind of a lot to absorb, if I listen to it, but I would like to read it, so send it to each one of the city councils.
Can we also place it on file?
Just the main printing them out.
Oh, okay.
All right. Can we also place it on file or whatever?
Absolutely.
So that we have it?
All in favor?
Aye.
On the pause, the ayes have it?
Mr. President, can we suspend the rules and take item 23 off the calendar?
What number is that, Counsel?
23.
23.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it? Read number 23 on the agenda, please.
Thank you. Mr. Mr. President, item number 23 is a resolution offered by Counsel Michael J. McGlaughlin, that the mayor's chief of staff give a written response as to why residential parking has been taken away on both sides of Union Ave.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, could, uh, we ask that the clerk read the correspondence from Mr. O'Donnell on this, that appears on our desk this evening?
Yes, I can. Ready? Good evening, distinguished counsel. I am forwarding this memo with respect to item 22. It's actually item 23 on the agenda. Is there, historically, there has been, there has not been residential parking on Union Avenue. Approximately four years ago, the street and sidewalks of Union Ave were redone. During this reconstruction, the no parking signs were removed and for some reason not replaced. And speaking with Sergeant Gaff of the Everett Police Department, concerning the matter, I was informed as follows. Currently, Union Ave is 17 feet, 5 inches across. The ideal space would be between 20 and 24 feet. When cars are parked on a side, it only leaves, it only leaves approximately 9 feet, 1 inches of clearance. And because of these dimensions, it would be impossible for a public safety vehicle to access the road should there be vehicle parked on the street. In addition, Sergeant Gaff has informed me that should an average vehicle be parked on the road, his regular duty pickup vehicle would have difficulty gaining access to the road.
Counsel McGlaughlin?
Mr. President, I, I respectfully, uh, I, I respect the piece that, uh, Mr. O'Donnell put before us this evening, but talking to some of the residents, there was a longstanding time that parking was allowed on that street, and then the signs went up for a short amount of time, and then the signs came down, as Mr. O'Donnell discussed, uh, with Sergeant Gaff. So there has been parking on and off, on and off, on this street for a long period of time. If a vehicle was parked on Liberty Street at the corner of Union Ave, an emergency vehicle would never be able to get down Union Ave as anyhow. That being said, I wonder if there'd be, uh, if you did 20 feet, which is already in place, but one spot in on Union Ave, could you add a few spots into that, into that street? So if you kept the, the corner cleared, would you be able to get a vehicle into there? That neighborhood is just so hammered with, with parking, and it's right outside of Norwood Street, right outside of Everett Square, and the, the neighborhood just really gets hurt heavily with no pa, with parking, as every neighborhood does, but I'm wondering if there's a middle of the road that, that we could find to be able to get a few spots there, um, and also be able to, uh, make it safe for the neighborhood. So I don't know if Mr. O'Donnell has any opinion on that. Uh, I don't want to put him on the spot because he's not Sergeant Gaff, but, um, invite Mr. O'Donnell up.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. O'Donnell. Mr. O'Donnell, I'm sure you can understand that the situation on Liberty Street and Union Ave with, with the residents down there. It's, Liberty Street is already one side of parking as tight as it is. I'm just wondering if, you know, on Union Ave, could you put a couple of cars, uh, because you want to be able to get a public safety vehicle down there anyhow, and any given day, you're not going to get a, a vehicle down that, down that small, narrow streets, and then you have Devon Street that cuts off there. You're never going to access that by a vehicle. So I'm wondering if, if there's something we could do to...
Oh, we're certainly, uh, open to, you know, any sort of reasonable accommodation, but I would defer it to the, um, to Sergeant Gaff and/or the city engineer to see what, if anything, could be done, but right now, the way it's been reported to me, that it'd be a dire situation if there was a car parked, like, even on one side, and then maybe a little bit down on, on, on the other side. It would, uh, really create havoc in terms if someone needed a box truck type of ambulance or any type of fire apparatus. I, I think it would be near impossible for, uh, anything to access that area, so right now, that would have to be paramount, but we're, we're certainly open to discussion on the matter.
And I appreciate that, and I, and I know you are, and I know you, you understand that. Just, you know, maybe I'll talk to Sergeant Gaff, but just seeing if there's any accommodations, because again, knowing that neighborhood as you do, you wouldn't be able to get a vehicle down there anyhow. You'd have to stay on Liberty Street and, and work a fire or an emergency call from Liberty Street, um, on any, whether there was parking and not parking on Union Ave, they wouldn't be able to get down the street.
And in, in terms of Liberty Street, you also mentioned, like, closing in, uh, parking in close proximity of the curb. We are going to, we will make every attempt to step up enforcement issues on that, because it's a statewide order, and instead, you keep, you shouldn't be parking more than, uh, 20 feet from the corner, so we, we would step up enforcement on that if, uh, if necessary, but, uh, you know, the, the public safety aspect, as you all agree, is, is, uh, paramount.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and I understand it. I just, I visualize that as the same as a dead-end street, where an ambulance or federal is not going to go up a dead-end street. They're going to work it from the next, the closest main street, uh, you know, main road that there is.
Yeah.
Just wondering if there was something, so maybe we can talk to Sergeant Gaff. I'm sure you and I can have a further conversation about this and see if there's anything we can do.
Going forward, absolutely.
For the neighborhood. Thanks, Mr. O'Donnell. Excuse Mr. O'Donnell, the customary thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to refer this to Mr. O'Donnell and Sergeant Gaff to have it, uh, another additional conversation, just, just, um, going forward regarding this matter. Make that as a motion.
Second on that? All in favor? On the pause, the ayes have it? Clerk, can you read?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion, take item 27 off the agenda.
What number?
Item 27.
27?
Second.
Seconded. All in favor? The ayes have it? Please read 27 on the agenda.
Item number 27, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counsel Wayne A. Matuski, that Massport addresses the airplane noise level that occurred on May 29, June 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, and to not repeat what happened in 2017 in regards to airplane noise.
Counsel Matuski?
Thank you, Mr. President. On these particular dates that are, that are, uh, on this agenda, uh, the noise levels, we're talking four planes a minute, boom after another. It, as we all recall, 2017 was a pretty much nightmare. Okay, uh, for residents of Everett, all over Everett, not just where I live. And, um, they were doing a runway over. They were repaving it, and that's why they used runway 33. Well, I happened to call on the hotline, and, uh, the gentleman said the northeasterly wind was blowing a certain way. And, uh, it went on for like 10 hours on June 4th. I have it all written down at home, but this is unacceptable. I don't want to repeat performance of what I, I have a sleep disorder thanks to this, this, uh, organization and this runway usage, and I should have sued them, yeah? I really should have. If I knew it was going to last this long, I would have. But it, it impairs a lot, and it's not just me. I had a young lady, uh, come to the house the other day, and she was crying because, uh, even when, if she put an air conditioner in her window, okay, she could still hear the planes. I do not want to repeat performance. You know, this is not a, uh, an issue that I, I take lightly. I had a chance to talk to, uh, Mr. Sousa, who was our community, uh, representative, and he's taking it seriously. He's notified Massport. I am not going to have another summer. You know, we had a lousy creepy spring. I think it rained 50 days out of 60, April and May. Now, the weather just starts to get nice. You want to enjoy your property. I happen to like gardening and painting my, uh, and it, it drives you crazy, okay? You have company, you, uh, plan a party. It's embarrassing. We don't get the, uh, residual effects that East Boston, Revere, and, and some parts of Chelsea get, and I don't want it. I just want peace and quiet, and I'm reasonable. I don't mind a plane now and then, you know, an hour or two, but this 12 hours baloney is for the birds, and, uh, it, it is a serious issue, and I, I'd like this letter sent certified. I want it certified to the executive director of Massport, letting them know of our concerns. Mr. Sousa, who is on the, uh, Massport Board, Community Relations, knows about it. He's going to bring his voice there. So I want a certified letter, and let's see if they respond, you know, uh, they do the con job all the time at Massport. They get all kinds of wards from, uh, the residents of East Boston, citizens of the, oh, police. It's the biggest con job going, but, uh, I want this letter certified, copy of this resolution sent to them, and I'm just hoping, the last couple of days have been good. I'm just hoping we don't have another year like we did 2017. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel. Seconded. All in favor? Seconded, all in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Go back to regular business. Read number three on the agenda, please.
Mr. President, item number three is an order from Council Richard Delasola Jr., as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves an order to authorize the fifty-three E and a half revolving funds in use by many city departments for FY two thousand twenty.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, if we can invite up our CFO, Mr. Demus, to just give me a brief understanding of what fifty-three E and a half revolving funds entail.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Hello, Eric Demus, CFO. This is a standard annual appropriation as required by statute. City Council in prior years has authorized the creation of these revolving counts, which requires that monies related to these activities go into the revolving account, and as such, it requires appropriation from City Council on an annual basis. There are no new revolving counts included in the order before you. They're all existing revolving accounts that have already previously been authorized.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
I apologize, Counsel Napolitano had just pointed this out to me, and I didn't see this previous to asking that question, so I apologize for that. I will yield the floor to any of my colleagues that might have a question on this.
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. President, through you to Mr. Demus. Good evening. The category at the end, the maximum annual expenditures, if it were to exceed that number, then if you could just play out the scenario, if it exceeds that number, it has to come formally before the council or no?
You're talking the maximum appropriation for each individual revolving account?
Correct, yeah.
Yes, it would have to come before council. I can tell you, though, that we would not incur an expense, because consistent with our operating fund, the general fund, as well as the enterprise funds, where we're locked into legally required appropriations, we utilize our purchase order system. And so prior to expensing or actually incurring any costs, you have to go through the purchase order process. And at that point, there would be, we wouldn't authorize the purchase order. If activity was significant and we couldn't get through the remainder of the year, we would come back before council.
Okay. So as it stands, though, if the maximum annual expenditure did not exceed these numbers, there's no need to come in front of the council? Is that correct?
Until the following fiscal year, that's correct.
All right, thank you.
Check and motion. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Counsel Capone.
No.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Metuski.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
And President Delasola.
Yes.
Nine yeas, one nay, you have passed.
Read number four on the agenda, please.
Item number four, Mr. President, is an order offered by Council Richard Delasola Jr., as president, that the city of Everett accept the provisions of Chapter forty-four, fifty-three F and a half of the Massachusetts General Laws, and establish a cable television public access fund effective seven one twenty nineteen.
On the motion, Counsel McGlaughlin.
I'm okay, I yield.
Seconded, roll call vote, please.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Metuski.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed.
Read number five on the agenda, please.
Item number five, Mr. President, is an order offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Jr., as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the annual capital improvement plan budget for FY twenty.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Mr. Chairman, I believe they said that because the, that was given to us tonight, that we wouldn't vote on this till the twenty-fourth, so are we referring this to the twenty-fourth? Am I confusing it with...
This is just the plan, this is not the appropriation. The appropriation will be brought...
The one we had tonight was the appropriation, right?
No, there was just a plan on, and if you vote favorable, in two weeks, there'll be an order on for the actual appropriation for funds, you know, to disperse. But this is just on the, on the plan that was presented to you.
On the plan that was presented to us tonight? Right, then they have to come for the appropriation?
Yes, in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Seconded. Roll call vote.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counsel DeFlorio.
Yes.
Counsel DePero.
Yes.
Counsel Hanlon.
Yes.
Counsel Metuski.
Yes.
Counsel McKinnon.
Yes.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counsel Napolitano.
Yes.
Counsel Simonelli.
Yes.
Counsel, President Delasola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed.
Read number six, please.
Item number six, Mr. President, is an order offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Jr., as president, dear honorable members, I hereby submit for your consideration an order that the below school department vehicles be declared surplus. The reference inventory is in need of costly repairs and is no longer of use to the school department once declared surplus by this honorable city council. The inventory will be sold by public auction, and there should be something on your desk showing you the...
Counsel Capone.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got, I've got the notice here that talks about item number six, and it talks about attached letter, but I don't have an attached letter. It's supposed to state the reasons for the need to dispose of the property. Does the clerk have a letter that talks about?
Whatever's in my files is all I have.
My, my request is we postpone this to our next meeting and request the letter that identifies exactly what the issues are.
That.
On the mo, okay. Seconded.
From the school department, or are we asking this from Mr. Mareshi?
Any, any individual who can speak to...
Okay, so I'll refer it to both of them.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. We're on number seven, please. Yes. Sorry. It's all right.
Excuse me. Item number seven, is a petition offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Jr., as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves the flammable registration of a DB National Warehouse Supply, Inc. at Tremont Street. Please note, this is, you are approving the flammable license, not the registration. Registration is annual, license is the one time. This is a new license, so I'm going to ask you to postpone this so that I may hold a public hearing.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. And read number nine on the agenda, please.
Yes. Item number nine, these are all committee on legislative affairs and elections reports. This is an ordinance offered by Council Richard J. Delasola Jr., as president, that the Everett City Council hereby approves an ordinance to regulate outdoor dining permits. Just so you know, Mr. Latanzi, and maybe Mr. Sousa, but definitely Mr. Latanzi is here to speak on this.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Make a motion, and we invite up Attorney Latanzi.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Mr. Sousa, I'm sorry.
Just state your name, please, and your position.
Matt Latanzi, Assistant City Solicitor.
Good evening, Tony Sousa, Director of Planning and Development.
Counsel McGlaughlin.
Mr. Latanzi, can you explain to us what, what this entails and overscope of this before I ask my questions?
Yeah, sure. So this ordinance is actually based on design, design guidelines that were approved by the city council, June twenty-six, two thousand seventeen. The purpose for this ordinance was basically to give those design regulations more teeth, so that instead of simply being a policy where it's a suggestion or a recommendation that outdoor dining areas abide by certain things, now it's a requirement that they do so. In addition, this is now licensing these outdoor dining areas so that they are permitted, so that they are basically known by the city and its officials where they're located, who has the correct ones, and to mostly ensure the safety of these outdoor dining areas. One thing that I didn't think of until really looking into this is when you have an outdoor dining area, you obviously have to encroach on the sidewalk, which would therefore take away room on the sidewalk, which may make it less accessible for people, specifically people in wheelchairs, and may force pedestrian traffic into the streets. So these are things we absolutely don't want to have in our city to ensure the safety of the people.
And you hit the nail right on the head from where I was going with this, Mr. Latanzi. So I understand the need for this, but I also understand the concern for this as well, as you just said, ADA compliance, these sidewalks are, are some, sometimes they're not even within compliance because they're old sidewalks that were done previous to the new standards and the new, and this, this is not a area-specific, this is across the city, so any restaurant business could open up, or, excuse me, could apply for outdoor dining. So I can imagine anyone in our neighborhood in Main Street that applied for one of these licenses would really hammer and impact the neighborhood negatively. How do we, how do we get around it? What do we, I mean, in layman's term, what do we do? Because we can't really vote on this, the way I see it, because it does allow that, it does give up, open that opportunity for anybody to come and apply for it, and they wouldn't, what do you think? Where do, where can you direct me in this?
So as to who can apply for it, obviously, anyone can apply for it. It is now who would be approved for it. There are very strict guidelines as to what has to be met in order for an approval to occur. This is not only run through the planning board, who has set forth the guidelines and will be looking to ensure compliance with these guidelines. It's actually issued, the permit itself is actually issued by the chief of police. This is because we have an ordinance, it is seventeen, seventeen dash twelve, that the chief of police must be, must be the issuing authority for any sale on a public way. Sidewalks are public ways in our city. So, you know, it's, it's running through planning, it's running through the city clerk, it's running through the police. It's truly to ensure a lot of safety and just the most proper usage of these outdoor dining areas. If, if I didn't hit upon your specific question, maybe you could...
Yeah, no, absolutely. Really, my only question really is, nobody could apply for them, because ADA compliance supersedes, supersedes requirement, local requirements, I believe, in none of the sidewalks. Or many of the sidewalks are not, are not ADA compliant because they're older sidewalks. Sousa, if you want to chime in, I can see you might have something to add to the conversation.
Sure, so is this mic on?
I hope it's on, I mean, I hope it's...
Yeah, I think up is on.
Up is on, okay. So at the end of the, the end of the day, the intent is to allow restaurants, establishments, eateries that have proper distance in front on the public way, on the sidewalk, to give them an opportunity. The configuration itself, we allowed for a lot of flexibility. We do put in standards in there for some type of uniformity. However, with respect to the ADA compliance, certainly not all sidewalks have the width for it, right, to support. So it would not be allowed necessarily in those fronts, in those storefronts. But there are areas in the city, in Everett Square, on Chelsea Street, on areas of Ferry, and even the Parkway as well, where it could be accommodated, but not necessarily everywhere. And even in those cases where it may be a tight squeeze, if you will, there's different ways to configure. So it is something that, you know, that we, we fully support, the mayor's been fully supportive of, and certainly my understanding the council has as well, to allow for at least an opportunity for those that may have the, the proper space in front, an opportunity to do some outdoor dining, some outdoor seating. And it doesn't look, it doesn't have to be necessarily tables and chairs purely, full-fledged configuration. It could be smaller cafe-style table and chairs enough, so again, so as we preserve the width for, for public access and safety, because we all know that's critically important. And so we do allow for flexibility, do believe that there will be businesses that will be able to participate, and there are circumstances where, sure, there may not be enough room. Perhaps it's hydrant, a light fixture, whatnot. And so in those situations, no, but in others where it may be a little tight, there could be an opportunity to configure appropriately. It's done in other cities and towns. We've looked at other communities extensively. I've implemented in the past elsewhere, and, you know, we've tried, we've tried different things to spark, to support the, the small businesses, and this is just another example of them.
Mr. Sousa, I know businesses in my, in my neighborhood that were told they couldn't put a A-frame sign on the sidewalk because it was, it was impeding ADA compliance and that it would be, so really nowhere in that area could fit into this requirement if we're going to go under the same guideline. Is that correct?
I disagree. It would depend on, it's an individual basis, so it'd depend on exactly what they have in front of the sidewalk. You're absolutely right about the A-frame, and there's a permitting requirement for that as well through, through ISD. Look, at the end of the day, it's not a, it's not necessarily one-size-fits-all, right, because there's different, different widths of sidewalk to support, but certainly there would be businesses that would be able to take advantage, you know, specifically, look at Everett Square. As you know, there is some space there and some of the establishment could accommodate. And frankly, there's even some existing businesses that have done some outdoor seating on a smaller scale that do respect the lane as well. I just don't want to lose sight of the fact that this outdoor seating is a positive thing for the community and for the small businesses.
I agree, and I agree. I just don't want to give an upper hand to some businesses that we can't accommodate for all businesses. And I know in the square area, last year, we actually had to go into the street and take, take away some of the travel lane to be able to accommodate that outdoor seating in that one place. We had to, I don't know if we lost parking there, but it was definitely within the travel lane, and we had to...
That's correct, and that was a concept that we were trying, that we were exploring, and if that presents itself again, you know, it's a little out of the box, but not too revolutionary.
But again, I wouldn't want to see that across the city, though, Mr. Sousa, where we were taking spots in, in travel lanes across.
No, that's, this ordinance doesn't do that, so.
Counsel McGlaughlin, if I can again speak to that. The applicability of this ordinance is not only for sidewalk outdoor dining, it actually also applies to private property outdoor dining, meaning if, you know, if a restaurant is located on a larger plot of land, and within their own plot of land, they wanted to have an outdoor dining area, that still has to be done through this ordinance. It still has to be permitted and licensed through this ordinance. So, you know, to say that some of the older sidewalks that may not be ADA compliant or just barely ADA compliant to the point where now adding a chair or a table would take them out of that range, it, this would still allow for outdoor dining so long as they have a private lot on the side or in the back of their building that wouldn't extend into the sidewalk. So this applies to both outdoor dining on municipally-owned sidewalks, private, public ways, anything that the municipality owns, as well as outdoor dining in private lots owned by the restaurant itself.
All you have the floor, McGlaughlin.
Thank you, counsel, counsel Hanlon, and counsel Florio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was going to ask, excuse me, I was going to ask about the, the public area also, and what I'm thinking of is that the city council has allowed a motor vehicle, truck, canteen, whatever you call it, to park on a piece of property in Revere Beach Parkway. We have said they're ours and so on and so forth. It sounds like what you have done, what you're talking about, is something that you have already have regulations established?
To my know, so we have design standards in place. Those design standards pertain mostly to... Those design standards pertain mostly to things like the size and materials for chairs and tables and umbrellas, as for their placement as well, but it's not nearly as encompassing as this ordinance. And it is simply a policy guideline, so more of a suggestion or a recommendation in ideal than a law or a regulation that must be followed.
You're talking about an ordinance, an ordinance is a law.
Correct, yes. So, this is codifying it into an ordinance, what is before you, as opposed to simply a policy or a guideline.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Councilor Florio, and then Councilor DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, Mr. Chairman, this stuff was all in committee. This is so repetitive, all right? We're getting to a point that, I understand some people are not on committees, but how many times can we have these gentlemen up here repeating the same thing over and over again? I gave up a scholarship night to come to that committee to make sure that there was a quorum, all right? And we're going over this all over again.
I would recommend...
If we, if things were not, are not answered in committee, and you're not satisfied, or you didn't get a report, then you send it back to committee. But there's no reason for someone to speak on a piece for one hour after we already spent one hour on committee. So, I apologize, I'm not trying to be rude, I'm not trying to take any time away from anybody, but this is getting very annoying when you're giving up your time, you're giving up time at work to get out of there early, giving up vacation time, and that's my job. I don't have a problem with it if we accomplish something. But this goes around in circles and nothing gets accomplished.
Me, from the chair, I would recommend, this came out of committee, the chairman of the committee should speak first before the rest of the council, if that's appropriate.
I do that with the community and business development, I explain everything to everybody. But the bottom line is, it's not, I'm not saying there's an issue, because there are some people that are not on committee. They may get the report, and they may have more questions. So, that's not an issue, all right? I'm not saying people are not allowed to ask questions, that's what, we're elected to ask questions. But to have explained the same thing repeatedly, repeatedly, everything they said was sent in committee.
Mr. Chairman, though I agree with my colleague, we have guests here, that's not...
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Thank you. Councilor DePiero. If there's no more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Florio couldn't have said it better. I miss scholarship night, too. To be quite honest, I'm frustrated. I don't mind spending time on things, Mr. President, it's wasting it that I have a problem with. Even though those two gentlemen that spent time here tonight weren't able to be at the committee meeting, it's exactly what our clerk explained to us, you know, applying for it and getting it are two different things. This is just repetitive, and if that's the case, I'm not going to attend these committee meetings anymore because I think it's ludicrous. Favorable action.
Second.
Councilor Hamlin, do you have a question? Yep, put your mic on. On the motion?
Yeah, I understand my two colleagues, but I also understand that I did not get a committee report. And I don't know where these committee reports are going or where they're coming from. But when we have a committee, and they meet, and they decide to do something, which is what we want them to do, I need to have that report because I have nothing about this in my pocket at all, you know? I mean, I don't know what happened to it, other than you folks explaining it to us, but you know... But that should be before the meeting, because that would eliminate a lot of this going back and forth, what they had, you know? I didn't know that it also covered private property, which is what I was concerned with, you know? So, and that's all I want to say on it, is that we should be getting the committee reports. And sometimes I know it's hard because of the fact that the committee meets at 6 o'clock, or 7 o'clock, 6 o'clock, and we meet at 7 o'clock. So, that's all I have to say on it, yeah.
Just to the colleagues, the committee report was mailed out, emailed...
It was definitely emailed, though.
It was emailed out to everybody the night of the committee meeting.
Well, that's assuming everybody has email, or can read email.
I would hope everybody has email. Okay, clerk, we'll go to the regular business.
This was made, a motion made for favorable action, it was seconded, and it's a roll call vote, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Counsel Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Florio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli.
Yes.
President Delisola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have enrolled the ordinance.
Thirty-four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ayes, ahs, have it. Please read number thirty-four, please.
Sorry, Tom. Item number thirty-four. Mr. President, it's a resolution offered by Counselor John Leo McKinnon that the City Council Committee on Legislative Affairs and Elections has the annual review of the legislative aid.
Counselor McKinnon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I send this to Legislative Affairs and invite a team from our legal staff, as well as Mr. Demus, and any member that would like to come or that's interested in this piece?
Seconded, all in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it?
Oh, don't worry, we're getting...
Clerk, you read number eleven on the agenda, please.
Suspend Rule 13, item twenty-six?
Seconded, all in favor? The ayes have it? Twenty-six, please.
Item twenty-six is an order, special legislation offered by Counsel Richard J. Delisola Jr. as President to conduct a joint meeting with the City Council and Planning Board pursuant to MGL Chapter 121A 6B to review the application submitted by Encore Boston Harbor to acquire land and improvements in Everett, Mass.
Counselor DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. President. As was explained to us at that joint meeting, that most of us attended, essentially a formality that required us to meet, it's a simple application that said this site was blighted, now it's not, we have to accept that application, and before we sit through another meeting like we just did, it's that simple, so...
I have the motion here. Can I, may I read something?
Go ahead, clerk.
There's two things. First, two of the three members that were unable to attend have signed and placed into the record that they've read the meeting minutes, have reviewed the tape, and signed, it's called the Mullins Rule. So, they will be allowed to vote on this item this evening. Normally, that's the procedure. So, everyone here will be allowed to vote on it.
Counselor Florio?
You missed the meeting, Counsel? All right, so you're the only one that will not be able to... And so, the other members will be allowed to vote, and I do have a correct motion, if you'd like. The motion is to move to accept and adopt the report of findings and recommendations of the planning board, and to forward the same to the mayor with the council's full support, approval, and positive recommendation.
So moved.
All right, I'll read the roll.
Roll call vote?
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli.
Yes.
And President Delisola.
Yes.
That would be nine yeas, two nays, you have passed.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Back to regular business. Read number twenty-eight, please. I'm sorry, gentlemen.
Item number eleven.
Number eleven, please.
Item number... Item number eleven. Mr. President, it's an ordinance offered by Counsel Peter A. Napolitano as President, being ordained by the Everett City Council, that Section 3-33, keeping ends and poetry of the rise ordinance of the city of Everett be amended as follows. The recommendation, if I may read from the board, the recommendation from both the Health Department, the Board of Health, and from the Committee on Legislative Affairs and Election, is to follow with their recommendation to delete the ordinance in its entirety and give the full authority to the Board of Health, who will be the regulator, regulating authority as in other communities.
Mr. Chairman, so...
Excuse me, on the motion, Counsel Napolitano?
Yeah, accept the communication, place on file, accept the motion as stated by the clerk to delete it in its entirety and transfer the responsibility to the Board of Health.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's going to be a roll call, Mr. President. Favorable action to delete. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor, I have you first, Delisola.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin. Counselor Siminelli.
Yes.
President Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano, sorry, give you another promotion, two, four, six, eight, yeas, zero nays. You have enrolled the ordinance.
Clerk, you read number twelve, please.
Yes. Item number twelve. These are committee in the hall on budget reports. Item number twelve is an order offered by Counsel Richard J. Delisola Jr. as President, that the FY '20 ECTV budget as submitted by the mayor in the sum of $628,684 is hereby recommended for approval by the committee.
Accept the report, favorable action?
Counselor Capone?
Mr. President, I don't think we need to suspend Rule 13 because it was in front of all of us, but just to be safe, I will suspend Rule 13.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it?
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Florio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli.
Yes.
President Delisola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed the ECTV budget.
When you're ready, read number thirteen, please.
Item number thirteen. Mr. President, it's an order offered by Counsel Richard J. Delisola Jr. as President, that the FY '20 budget as submitted by the mayor and is amended by the city council by reducing $20,200 is hereby recommended for approval by the committee on the revised sum of $208,2565. Please note that there is a typo, it's reducing it by $22,200. The total number is correct.
Accept the report, favorable action?
Second motion.
Roll call vote?
Did you want to suspend it again, Mr.?
Yeah. Mr. President, just to follow suit, let's suspend Rule 13.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it?
Counsel...
On the piece?
On the motion, Counsel Capone?
Thank you. Before we vote, I know we all put a lot of time into this. I made a number of cuts. Some of them passed, most of them did not. For that reason, I will not be voting in favor of the budget as revised.
Thank you. Counselor Florio?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't want to make this meeting any longer than it already is, but I do have one quick question that I want to clarify, and I'd like to ask Eric Demus to come up, please.
Say your motion.
Mr. Demus, on the outside, there's a lot of questions being asked, obviously. So, on the actual budget, the city budget, what's the difference between last year's budget and this year's budget? Did the budget go up or did it go down?
The operating portion, so the city operating portion went down approximately $79,000 as presented. So, it's actually down approximately $100,000 based upon the revised cuts. The school department operating budget is up approximately $6.5 million over the prior year. And the city's fixed costs, including health insurance, debt service at all, is up approximately 2.5.
Okay. So, if we really wanted to make a big difference on this budget to the taxpayers, you can't fix, you can't cut fixed costs. You can't cut city employees if they were getting a 2% raise or whatever, it's the police department or the fire department. We're not going to cut the schools. So, what are we cutting?
There were a number of recommendations that were made during the budget process. I would defer to each and every individual city councillor as to where they think that they could make cuts.
Well, I just wanted to make a point, there wasn't much to be cut there, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Second roll call vote, please.
No.
Excuse me. Counselor Florio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli.
No.
And President Delisola.
Yes.
Now, that vote was as amended?
Eight yeas, two nays, yeah, with the amendment.
It was a $22,000, okay.
Yep, whatever I read in the clause, yeah. Two hundred.
Read number sixteen on the agenda, please.
Item number fourteen is an order offered by Counsel Richard J. Delisola Jr. as President, that the FY '20 water and sewer enterprise budget as submitted by the mayor in the sum of $19,608,367 is hereby recommended for approval by the committee.
Say your motion.
Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Florio. Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli.
Yes.
And President Delisola.
Yes.
Ten yeas, zero nays, you have passed the water sewer budget. Item sixteen. Item number sixteen is a, Mr. President, it's an ordinance offered by Counsel Anthony DePiero, that the zoning ordinance of the city of Everett are hereby amended by adding a new Section 19A regulations governing application of a site planned review for Dover amendment uses as follows. A project that has been determined by the Building Commissioner to be protected use, classified as a Dover amendment use, shall be reviewed under the Everett zoning ordinances with specific review standards to be promulgated within the planning board rules and regulations.
Counselor DePiero.
Mr. President, this is another one of those pieces that has been through several meetings, and I recommend a move for favorable action.
Seconded.
Please note, this is for ordainment. Counselor Capone.
Yes.
Counselor Delisola.
Yes.
Counselor Florio.
Yes.
Counselor DePiero.
Yes.
Counselor Hamlin.
Yes.
Counselor Matusky.
Yes.
Counselor McKinnon.
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Siminelli.
Yes.
And Counselor Napolitano.
Yes.
Because I have you listed last. Ten yeas, zero nays, and you are ordained the ordinance.
Clerk, read number seventeen, please.
Item number seventeen. Mr. President, it's a resolution offered by Counsel Michael J. McGlaughlin that the administration given...
Excuse me, we ran this one, yes? I was listening to you.
Yep, don't listen to me sometimes.
Number eighteen, please.
Thank you for catching that. Number eighteen, Mr. President, is a resolution offered by Counselors Wayne A. Matusky, Michael Marchesi, Stephen Siminelli, John Leo McKinnon, that the harbor master or the operator of the Alfred Street Bridge appear to explain the operation and plans for the expected increase in vessels visiting Encore Resort.
Counsel Matusky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor McKinnon and I had this on the agenda for the last couple of months, we've discussed it. You know, we've discussed the pedestrian overpass. We've discussed a lot of things that we think might occur. You know, but I was riding by the casino over Memorial Day weekend, and there was no police details, and there was no traffic. It was a beautiful ride right through. The bridge was down. You know, I want to see this be successful. And as a city father, I'm a little nervous, but who knows? Maybe it's all for nothing. Maybe everything's going to work out just fine. There's been a lack of communication with, you know, the Encore people, I believe... There's been a lack of communication with, you know, the Encore people, I believe, right up to this today. As we all know, we were invited to a thing on Wednesday, June 25th, on Wednesday. You know, it gives you a 48-hour notice, I don't know about you, but I have somewhat of a life, and I like to be notified about things. Our administrative aide is not supposed to do the bidding for each individual councilman. He is here to work and communicate and so forth. We all have addresses. I'm referring to, Mr. President, I have never received a piece of meal from that resort, okay? You seem a little puzzled.
Oh, we get emails, Counsel.
No, no, I'm talking about anything delivered to my house from them, okay? I don't know about anybody else, I don't think anybody else here.
Counsel, I've never seen a meal from the casino.
All right, so we're all on the same playing field.
Same boat.
I'm trying to be nice here. I'm trying to be real nice. But it appears that the Chief of Police told Mr. Connors from the Bridge Department not to appear, that he was handling it, it's all under control. Okay, so that part's done. The pedestrian bridge, well, we'll see how that works out. And what's the other issue that? I just want to see this thing work. You know, anybody that spends $3 billion on a project and gets it up so quickly, I mean, as we talked about here, and it's not even funny, a local park in the city took three years to do, and yet this casino went up in two years. You know, it's pretty profound, and I gotta give him credit. So, I'm not just, and from what I saw of the tours we did take, it is impressive beyond belief. You know, and I just want it to be a success. I just wish there was more communication, personal communication. You know, emails are great, you know, but not for nothing. I'm concerned about this bridge, but it appears that our local law enforcement agency is not. Oh, he's concerned about it, but he feels that it's gonna be okay. Well, we shall see. We shall see a lot of things very shortly, but, you know, I hope it's successful. You know, because that 89% of the people in this city want, wanted this thing to happen. I don't know if they'd get that kind of number ever again. But I expected more, you know, from, from an aspect of community relations and so forth. But, you know, I'd like to refer this back to sponsor until a later date. I talked to my co-sponsor, and we'll see how things go. I just want it to work, I mean, if they're spending $3 billion, they gotta know about this bridge situation. They gotta know about a lot of things. And as they tour down these buildings that are lower Broadway, these homes that, many of them, when I've been in over the years, I knew everybody that lived in those houses, it's really taken form. The landscaping looks great, you know, and I just want it to work, move forward, and maybe, just maybe, there will be no problems. You know, I hope that's the case. But that's my motion on this piece.
Thank you. Counsel McKinnon?
Let me see here. We asked that someone come in from, actually, Boston to discuss the engineering aspect of this. And I had a conversation with Mr. St. Louis on this. So, I just, I'd like to invite him up just to see if he can actually answer a couple of my questions now.
All in favor? The ayes have it.
I'm the co-sponsor on it, so I'd like to ask a couple of questions. If you don't want to yield to the courtesy of me, then that's fine, Peter, I don't care. All right, that's fine, because I don't do that to you.
Great, okay, gentlemen. Speak to me, please.
Mr. President, can I ask a question of Mr. St. Louis?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Mr. St. Louis, how did you get involved with this?
The city engineer in Boston contacted me saying he received a request to appear before the City Council. He stated to me that he was unavailable that Monday that I received that call. And he gave me an update to give the council if it so pleased the council.
Okay. Now, there was at no point in time there was any conversation in this back room here with any of our staff about this, because you knew nothing about it because you weren't invited on that, it was just the city of Boston. And actually, we, me and Counselor Matuski, sat down and spoke to the engineering department from there, and they were coming. And then all of a sudden, they weren't coming.
When I received the call from the city engineer in Boston, I was in the back garage of the yard doing whatever. I may have.
You never had any conversation with anybody in this office here?
Not unless it was at the time of the meeting saying, by the way, the city engineer told me he could not be present tonight. That would be the conversation I would have relayed.
Because I had asked you that, and you said that you had a conversation with one of our members back here, not a member, but one of our employees, we'll say. And they basically mentioned that, or whatever, and then you got involved.
I would have relayed the conversation that the requested person could not attend, and that they gave me an update if the council wanted me to speak to it.
Okay.
I think I signed the attendance sheet saying that I could speak to that item that night.
Can you add any information on this now?
To the extent, I think at the time, this was the end of March, beginning of April. PJ, for lack of a.
I don't think it's a thing, I think it's quite apparent that we need, we need, well, you know, if we're gonna make comments, let's make comments. I'll make them back, I don't care, people, I'm not sitting here to make any friends, and I don't care.
We're here to ask questions to get answers.
Excuse me for that interruption.
So, at the time that the question was posed, I believe it was an update in general on the bridge was, as I remember the question. And at the time, the engineer, the city of Boston engineer, gave me an update saying that the construction was ahead of schedule. They were going through the action of rust proofing and repainting areas where the deck had interfaced with the bridge abutments and whatnot. So, there was a coating activity going on, and there was some nighttime lane revisions. But otherwise, the bridge had been reconstructed from its.
Finished form to, new finished form?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to get that out to where, we had discussion on this, and I wanted to know how everything transpired to where they were coming then, they didn't want to come, or whatever, because there was conversation going on, or something like that. It was seeming like there was a blocking mechanism going on, not only from you or from them over in Boston, but coming out of this building here. And I was quite disturbed with it. So, and I'm still disturbed with that now, because when we request someone to come, they come. Normally. When I do, anyway. You know why? Is because I have a lot of experience with that down there, LNG and everything else. I talked to Mr. Minino when he was the president. He's no longer with us anymore, was the great, you know, he was the greatest mayor down there, okay? And that guy right there wanted LNG off-site, okay? So, there's a lot more than what we were requesting to come in. I had the Marine Division from the North End, state police, they were coming in. Subsequently, they're not here either. Seems like someone's blocking every move that we're doing here. We want answers, too. We want them from you, we want them from our chief, but then we want them from the state, we want them from the feds, and SA if we need to, because I had them testify before me here, too. So, I know what I'm asking for. And I'm kind of pissed right now that they didn't come. So, thank you for appearing tonight.
No problem, sir.
Any more questions for our guest? Thank you very much.
Now, you can refer it back to sponsor.
What'd you like to do with this piece?
Refer it back to sponsor.
Seconded, all in favor? All opposed, the ayes have it. Clerk, can you read number 20 on the agenda?
Item number 20. Mr. President, there's a resolution offered by Counselor John Leo McKinnon and Wayne Matuski, that the administration and a member of Encore come before the council to explain how the parking lot across from Encore on Route 99 will be charging cars by hour, how much per hour, and where will the monies from the parking go, be going to be designated. Please provide a breakdown.
Counsel McKinnon?
Could we have Mr. Marti before us, please?
Through you, Mr. President, to invite a guest. Mr. Marti, do you have any information on this?
Sure. So, a little bit of history, I think you guys are familiar with. When the Encore Resort was permitted, they were permitted with 3,000 onsite parking spaces. In the time since they were permitted, since they've, you know, built their facility, they've purchased a lot of the property on the opposite side of the street. They felt that in the initial months or year or two of the facility, that their onsite spaces, plus all their satellite parking locations, may not be enough. And so, they were looking for other opportunities to park vehicles. The site across the street became kind of a prime target, they owned it, it was easy pickings. But because it was too close to their site, it would have violated their permitting agreement with the state, and therefore, they couldn't operate the parking lot. They asked this administration and this council to, essentially, rezone the site temporarily to allow surface parking for up to three years, which this council, I believe, approved. And the city will be managing that lot through an outside contractor.
How much is the payment of, and the hours of operation? And the hours that are actually gonna be fortified? Can you break it down per payment?
Sure.
I heard it was zero to six is free?
No.
Okay, so that's not, oh, these are just bad rumors, we'll say.
I get, apparently so. No, and something to keep in mind, we don't want this to be a place where people come in and out all day and generate traffic on Broadway. We also don't want to be incentivizing, you know, this as parking in the long term either. So, the way this is set up is that it will largely mirror the parking prices at the facility. Now, the parking prices at the facility are $26 for up to six hours, and $42 for up to 24, each 24 hours. We're gonna be just under that, 25 and 40. So, you know, it will act as overflow for those folks who want to pay those prices, but it will not be the, you know, cheap, easy parking that some folks may be looking for, because that would in turn generate a lot of traffic on Broadway. It would really mess up things, so we didn't want that either.
Now, those funds come to the city.
So, yeah, and actually, we're, I think the next meeting, we're coming before you to enact what's called a parking benefits district in the city. And what this does, this is, through some state legislation, what it allows for is we define the district as the city, and we can define facilities, parking facilities within that district. The revenues from that would then be restricted to spending on infrastructure, parking or roadway, or, you know, transportation infrastructure. The goal of this is to help fund some of the major initiatives that the mayor would like to see done, whether it be the bus lane down lower Broadway, whether it be contributing to the pedestrian bridge across the Mystic River, the Silver Line from Chelsea. So, this would restrict those funds and allow us to use those for those purposes. The other thing it would do, too, is you can use it for management of parking. So, we've always had this big, you know, discussion about expanding resident-only parking across the city. That takes some significant resources, and that staffing, or technology, or whatever it may be. So, this would be a funding source we could use for that as well.
So, you can use this funding for 24/7 residential? Is that what you're saying?
Right, so what I'm saying is, by defining the city as the district, any parking-related expenses could be paid for out of this, you know, revenue from the parking lot. So, like I said, we'll be before you, hopefully, next session.
Now, that's only for three years, but then they're gonna be building their tower on the other side where that is.
Right, so the other piece of this, too, is that we don't want to put it towards things that are gonna be recurring costs. If we can find, you know, targeted projects or things that we can put it towards and walk away and be, you know, clean, then that's the preference.
And then, so maybe we'll get our pedestrian bridge?
Maybe.
From one side to the other, maybe it'll be a good thing. Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Capone, and Counsel McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. President, through to Mr. Marti. We started to talk about this at one of the other meetings, and we didn't want to segue into something else, so I'm glad it's here and we can chat about it. As far as the agreement goes, have we identified potential operators of the lot?
Oh, yeah, so we're actually already under contract with an operator to operate that lot.
And what is the financial agreement in terms of the cost to manage the lot?
So, it's a flat fee, I believe, we're starting with a trial period, I think it's six, six months or 12 months, I'll have to double check that.
Okay.
But for the one-year cost is $460,000 approximately to operate that lot.
That's the flat cost?
Yep.
And what do we anticipate revenues to be?
So, it's a little bit of an unknown. You know, I think if you do a back-of-the-napkin calculation, and you said half of the spaces get used twice a day, and I don't know if that's, I think that's being a little conservative, but to be honest, I couldn't really tell you. That's, you know, four to five million dollars a year.
Okay.
But, you know, keeping in mind, all the transportation issues we've talked about with them are meant to mitigate the need for parking.
Right.
You know, it might be more than that, it might be less than that, I just honestly don't know.
I'd be very surprised if it isn't $460,000, but let's say it isn't.
Right.
So, now the city's on the hook for?
The city will be on the hook for that, yeah.
Whatever the shortfall would be. As far as the agreement, whether it's six or 12, is there anything built in that contract that talks about percentage over the flat fee if there's X amount of revenue generated, or no?
So, one of the things we did kick around was whether to do an agreement that was, you know, percentage fee-based, so if they could, depending on what you wanted to use the law for, if you wanted to drive revenue and raise as much revenue for the city, you might structure the contract such that they would price it and operate it in a way that brought in the most revenue. I think at this point, not knowing the demand precisely, and also considering some of the other concerns, whether it be traffic-related or, you know, just other things that are going on in the area, we didn't want to lock ourselves into a company purely having a profit motive.
Right.
Now, we may come back in a year after a year and say, hey, you know what, like, it really doesn't affect the traffic, and hey, let's cash in and do something different.
Right, because that can create other headaches, so I appreciate that. And the agreement is, it's either six months or a year? Or is that just like the financial part of it? If we, if we could please have Mr. Demas for it?
So, the contract is actually for one year, but we do have termination clauses built in there.
Okay.
In addition to that, we did put in a six-month review process.
Okay.
So that we can get together with the contractor, letting him know that we may want additional changes. When the bids originally came in, I believe that bid came in just under $900,000. A lot of the specifications were established and designed by when. They wanted everything in there, consistent with one of their parking lots. What we were able to do, though, collectively as a group, is to get together, look at the scope, figure out what services we could provide as a city, so that we could pare those costs down. For example, the city owns a street sweeper, we can actually sweep the parking lot. You know, the city has a very good parking enforcement division that we can actually aid. But what the city did not want to do is, the city did not want to hire a bunch of full-time employees for a short three-term period. So, we were able to actually cut that cost in half, letting him know that we have never run a parking lot of that size with that amount of demand. And we may decide in six months that there are additional changes to the scope that may be warranted, and they were very amenable to all of our issues.
No, that's good to hear. With regards to the operator, they're gonna maintain full insurance, full liability on the property?
Correct.
Okay, and I'm glad to see there's a six-month review in there, in case things aren't going so great. How about a right to renew? Do they have a right to renew that's built in that contract?
They do.
They do. Is it a one-year renewal, or is it repeating? Because I think we're assuming this is probably a three-year situation.
We were very clear and upfront that we were anticipating this to only be a three-year situation.
Okay.
Certainly, they would have the right to renew, but again, we put clauses in there that we can terminate the contract at any time, and we did let them know, again, with that six-month review. There are a lot of things that we know that we don't know, and we wanted that flexibility to be able to make those determinations.
Okay. And with regards to, and I don't want to belabor it, because it sounds like most of the issues have been covered, but with regards to termination and renewal, is there, is there a cap on the renewal? there a cap on the renewal? Is it renewal for one or two periods or it just says open-ended renewal?
Well, underneath the procurement laws, it would be three years and then we would go out to bids. So you could do a one-year with then two additional one-year renewals.
And is that what's built into this?
That's what we're focusing on is the three-year.
And then the termination, is it for cause or is it any reason?
I haven't seen the exact language of the contract. I can know what my opinions were shared and I believe that we did get that, but I believe we can just shut it down after 60 days' notice that we're unsatisfied for whatever reason.
There probably has to be some basis though, I would imagine.
I would think so, yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you. And so at this point's flat fee, is the fee renegotiable in the following term or is there a set number? Like if it gets renewed for year two?
Yeah, so the fee is actually negotiable in six months if we determine that there's additional services that we just can't handle and can't provide from a maintenance standpoint, that sort of thing. We already, their pricing model came in on specific action items.
Okay.
And when we changed, significantly removed a number of their action items, that's what lowered the cost and cut it to, you know, nearly a 45% reduction in the cost. So if they renew, as of right now, unless they refuse to renew, we would be going forward underneath the same terms of the contract. I'm sure that they would want to have a discussion with their employees. They have fixed costs that go up as well.
And a last question. What obligations do we have as a community with regards to the contract? Any?
Could you, what do you mean obligations as a community?
What are the responsibilities of the city with regards to that contract? Do you know?
Yeah, so.
If any.
Like any other contract, we got to make sure that they're operating the way we want them to be operating. There are some maintenance items that we need to fulfill that we removed, such as sweeping, snow plowing. We're responsible for keeping that parking lot in good usable order. If they have issues, they have their own security. So if they have issues, you know, we have a law enforcement responsibility that we would have to assist them with.
Okay, so are we plowing it?
We are going to be plowing.
Okay, so we're doing the plowing?
Yes.
We'll be doing any kind of repair, anything in that nature or no?
No repairs of the, like, fair equipment.
Like the pavement?
Yeah, I think that would probably fall on the city, I believe, right?
So it sounds like maybe general maintenance?
Little potholes, things of that nature, we would be required to. But in the terms of their contract, like for example, they have arms. When you enter and exit, they're responsible for those items and maintaining those pieces of equipment.
So general maintenance looks like it falls in the city. Maintaining equipment, et cetera, would be the operator?
Generally, yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Councilman McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the information we got on this parking facility. Two questions I have. One is, is it by credit card only payment for this lot?
It is primarily credit card, but it will have the ability to take cash. So there will be machines. It's actually very similar to if you park at the airport, there's a machine there, you put your ticket in that you took and it may have a cash option, but it has also a credit card option. What it won't have is somebody at a booth at the exit gate taking bills.
Okay.
That, you know, that way people will flow in and out, you know, without.
But you can pay the box by cash?
Right.
Okay. Second question is, so this is all regarding the parking lot that's across the street from the site. What happens? Is there same guidelines in place for the seven-acre parking facility on River Green Drive?
No, so that one, because it was far enough from the casino site, they were able to operate that lot themselves without violating any of their, you know, MIBA requirements.
So Encore themselves are going to?
They are.
And do we gain any benefit financially or otherwise from that facility?
There's no financial benefit that I'm aware of.
Okay. And so that I don't get accused of taking too much time on the floor. Mr. Demus, is there a copy, a rough, smaller version of the agreement that we signed into with the city, just so that I can read it, understand it and have a discussion with you? Or do you want me to come to your office and we can look at it together just so that I can understand it better? You gave a lot of information tonight, which was, you know, quick to absorb all of that information. I'd like to just see it so that we, you know, can review it and if there's additional questions to be asked, is that?
Certainly, there's a copy in the procurement office and it's open for review. If you'd like us to provide you with one, we can email you one tomorrow or you can stop and pick it up.
Is there an email? Is there something you could just email? And again, there may be no additional questions, but if there are additional questions, we can have a good discussion over about it not here on the floor. But if you could email it, that would be, that would be great.
I'll email it first thing in the morning.
Thanks, Demus, appreciate it.
Set. Councilman Hillen and then Councilman Seminelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just thank you for everything you've told us so far, but I just missed one point. And that was, I think you said 24/7. It was $26 for up to six hours of parking?
Correct.
What happens after the six hours?
After the six hours, it's $40 for up to 24 hours.
So you pay $26 and then it would be added on to 40 to make an additional 40?
No, so if you enter the lot, you take a ticket. If you come back and it's less than six hours, it's $25. If you come back and it's been anywhere between six and 24, it's $40. Yep.
Thank you very much. Do you know anything about the parking at the resort itself?
So the pricing is, so ours is 25 and 40, theirs is 26 and 42. So they're very similar. They have about 3,000 spaces there, which is a relatively small number. That's why they've been so, you know, comprehensive with their alternative transportation plan.
Got it. Is there a special fee for someone that has rented a lot?
So I do believe that if you've spent a certain amount of money, I don't know the amount at the casino, whether it be gaming or, to be honest, I don't know how they calculate that, but they are comping some parking at the resort.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Seminelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. True to Councilman Seminelli. Do you know what the fee is for the Valley Park?
I don't.
I'm worried about people driving up a mood of schenectic. Do you know if they have Valley Park in the night?
They do have Valley Park. There's a premium and I just don't know off the top of my head what that premium is for the Valley Park. It's something north of, you know, 45 some odd dollars. It's probably 50 or 60, but I don't know.
We don't know. We don't know. It's very expensive.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome, Councilman. No other questions of our guests? Motion's made in second and excuse it to customary thanks. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor McKinnon, your pleasure.
Refer this back to sponsor.
Motion's made in second and refer the item back to sponsor. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed, the eyes have it. Yes.
Thank you.
Next order of business is?
Twenty-one, Mr. Chairman?
Twenty-one? Item 21.
Item number 21. Mr. Chairman, item number 21 is a resolution offered by Counselor Michael McGlaughlin, Anthony DePiero and Richard J. Delasola Jr. That the administration consider a day of celebration and recognition for our first responders and their families with a response back at the next meeting.
Councilman DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This piece was discussed between the three sponsors last year as well, Counselor McGlaughlin and I, along with President Delasola. We saw it take place in another town. We thought it was a nice idea to honor those that keep us safe every day and their families and have some sort of event, just let them know that we appreciate them. And I'll yield if anyone else wants to speak.
I think Councilman McGlaughlin want to speak?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any correspondence back from?
No, they probably expected to give you a response for June 24th because this just got on, this is new business.
No, no, this was, no, this is unfinished business.
My mistake. No, there is not a correspondence though, not in my file.
Okay, so then again, lay this over for two weeks and hope that we'll hear a response back then. Thank you.
Motion's made in second and to lay this on the.
I have it. We're going to refer to the mayor with a response back from the 24th, the mayor's office. I have it here.
All's in favor? Aye. All's opposed, the eyes have it. Is it item 28?
Item number 28. Mr. Chairman, is a resolution offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero and Counselor Rosa DeFlorio requesting input from the administration at the next Government Operations Committee meeting on the idea of online water usage and account management.
Councilman DePiero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, another idea that I saw another city of town utilizing, a nice tool for residents to track their usage online and manage their account. I know the administration said they were working on some different online tools in the past, just seeing where we're at on it and if the usage could be there. And I'd like to refer this to the stated committee.
What committee was that?
What was that?
You want to refer this to where?
Government Operations, Public Service and Public Safety.
Motion's made to send this to Government Operations Committee. All's in favor? Oh, Councilman DeFlorio, I'm sorry.
Invite Mr. Demus. I mean, this is good also if you start to think, if you don't live in the city, you're an absentee landlord, you could keep track, you know, when how many people are moving in your house and you can catch it early on if you have a leak. So this would be a good tool to have, even for the landlords that don't live here. So send it to Government and Operations and invite Mr. Demus.
Motion's to add Mr. Demus to this as an invitee to the committee. All's in favor? Aye. All's opposed, the eyes have it. Item 29.
Excuse me. Item number 29 is a resolution offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero requesting an immediate response from National Grid as to when the several streetlights that are out on Sycamore Street will be fixed.
Councilman DePiero.
I put this on out of frustration, as many of my colleagues can share with me. There's been three lights out on Sycamore Street for some time now. And I don't know if you're aware, but there's only three lights on the hill portion of Sycamore Street. So it's pretty dark, right in front of my house. My neighbors aren't happy, I'm not happy. But I was informed by the administration that they will be taking over these poles going forward and replacing the lights. This is at the top of the list. So with that, I'll refer it back to sponsor.
Motion's made in second and refer it back to sponsor. All's in favor? Aye. All's opposed? The eyes have it. Item 31.
Mr. Chairman, item 31 is a resolution offered by Counselor Anthony DePiero requesting that the city partner with the Commonwealth's Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the 2019 Buckleup Safety Challenge as part of the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration's Picket or Ticket Effort to Save Lives by Increasing Seatbelt Use.
Councilman DePiero.
Thank you once again. This was a program that caught my attention. I sent some information to my colleagues the other day. I don't know if everyone had a chance to read it, but essentially it is partnering with the state to put a decal on municipal vehicles for one month excluding public safety, DPW vehicles, ISD perhaps. They come out and install the sticker and for each vehicle, the city receives $50 and they cap it at $2,500. So essentially it's free money and it could be put back towards some kind of safety program, bike helmets for kids, whatever the administration of this body sees fit. So I'd like to refer this to the mayor's office.
Motion's made in second to refer this item to the mayor's office. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All's opposed? The eyes have it. Refer it to the mayor. Item 32.
Item number 32. Mr. Chairman, is a resolution offered by Counselor Stephen Seminelli that the mayor's[1680.52]